All right, continuing with my theme throughout the day. Sorry, I'm late. Let's go ahead and start with roll call.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Mayor Yubacorum.
Great, let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick reminder to the public, tonight is a regular session meeting, which means that anyone wishing to speak at the first call, public invited to be heard, needs to put their name on the list. You'll have three minutes. At three minutes, I will cut you off, not because they don't like you or don't like what you have to say, it's just that that's what we do, except for last week, and while we were here till 12:30. But we will cut you off at three minutes, and so, and you also need to have your name on that list. If you don't have your name on the list prior to starting, public invited to be heard, you can still talk, but you'll need to wait till the end of the meeting. All right, so do I have a motion for approval of minutes of the January 8th, 2019 regular session? All right, let's vote. Mayor Protam? That passes unanimously. All right, as far as agenda revisions and submission of documents or motions for future action, council just got out of executive session. It was posted that we were discussing two things. One was annual review for yourself. If we could put compensation discussion for a regular session meeting in two weeks, that would be good. And then, that's when our next one is, two weeks, right? Three weeks? All right, if we could do that, that would be great, and we didn't have a chance to get to the other posted issue, which was Eugene Mace Annual Review. So, because we ran out of time, we figured it was only fair to our city attorney to postpone that, and we would like to set an executive session for next Tuesday at 4:00. Could we please post that? City Clerk? Great. Am I forgetting anything, guys? All right. Anyone else? Okay, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. We have, in various places, been discussing the city's role, if any, in, if the federal shutdown continues, in dealing with people, residents of Longmont who are in distress one way or another by the continued absence of federal services. And I would like to request that, assuming that the situation still continues, that we have a report by the staff on the next regular session of what has been done and what the city requests people to do in order, in order to help with the situation. So, obviously, I want to add that if the situation is resolved, they should stop work on that report immediately and remove it from the agenda.
Just to update, I know we talked about that on Friday. Sandy's trying to bring everyone together, plus those that have been working with our county partners on this.
Oh, I guess, I mean, I guess, I guess, it does need to be a motion. I mean, yeah, technically, we should make it a motion.
I saw move.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I guess my only question, I probably have lots of questions, but the one I'm going to ask right now is, how, I mean, I was, we had this conversation in a public meeting on Friday, and you gave the impression that you've been, you've been thinking about it, that this, the plan wouldn't be that hard to make or to implement. Is it possible, next week's a study session, is it possible to actually do it next week?
I think the challenge for us is getting everyone together to bring all of those pieces to bear.
The motion is for the next regular session, which would be three weeks. Is that an appropriate deadline?
We could probably, what's in two weeks, Sandy? We can do it at the second study session. We have study sessions back to backs, so if we can get it ready, we'll have it ready sooner.
Is that okay?
That's absolutely fine with me. I want them to give it, have enough time, and again, I hope it goes away before they have to do a report.
All right, good luck with that. Mayor Protam Christensen?
I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to draft a letter to be sent to all of Colorado's congressional representatives and our two senators urging them to reopen government. And after government is opened, we can discuss anything else, but we need to reopen government.
Actually, technically, we do. Let's vote on that one, and then let's pick up that one.
Yes. I thought we had voted on that.
I'm in much too good a mood to find anyone out of order, so we'll just go ahead and vote, and then come back. All right, seeing nobody else in the queue for dialogue or debate, let's go ahead and That passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. All right, Mayor Protam. Mayor Protam, was that a motion? Actually, I believe, let me restate the motion. We're not voting, but I didn't hear a second, but basically, it was to draft, go ahead, why don't you restate your motion?
Okay. It's to direct staff to draft a letter from city council and to all of the Colorado represent, national representatives and our two senators to reopen government, because it is harming a minimum of 50,000 people in Colorado. It is putting everyone on, every government-assisted program at risk, and particularly older people, and people who are receiving housing assistance and food assistance. It's affecting this town, and it's going to continue to affect this town in an extremely negative way, the longer this goes on. Do I have a second?
It's been seconded. Councilmember Finley?
Well, I am in complete agreement that we would like to see an end to the government shutdown. I don't believe a letter from us will tip it one way or the other. I believe our delegation is, at least the senators are on the same page. So, while I, I guess we can vote on this, I'd rather not make, you know, waste our time with things that won't make any difference, I guess I should say.
Nobody else is in the queue, but I'm also in agreement with both of you, and so, let's just go ahead and do it, instead of arguing about it. Then somebody will get it done. The motion on the floor is ask city staff to draft a letter to our federal representatives, encouraging them to end the shutdown, and do whatever they need to to end the shutdown. And it's been seconded. Is that an appropriate reclarification of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote. That passes unanimously. All right, let us move on to city manager. You don't have a report, do you? I'm sorry? Okay. Do you have a report?
No report, Mayor, Council.
All right. You know what? I'm sitting here looking. Is the Martin Luther, is the multi, is the Multicultural Action Committee here, the Martin Luther King folks here? I know Maria Tozado's not here, but they were going to redo their proclamation at the next one? Okay. Because they have a framed proclamation that I asked them to bring with them. So, and we're going to do that because the proclamation had, didn't have Eric Finisted's name on it, and they want their picture for posterity. So, I said, just come on back, and we'll redo it. So, all right, special reports and presentations. Let's move on to a presentation of Colorado Government Association of Information Technology Award for Outstanding Leadership in the honor of Jim Wall.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to introduce Scott Magrash, who is from the Colorado Association, Colorado Government Association of Information Technology. He's going to explain who he is here with, and tell you a little bit more about the award at the end. We'd love to do a photo. Obviously, Jim meant a ton to all of us, and I just can't express my gratitude to Seagate for pulling this together.
Thank you, Sandy. Mayor, members of council, members of city staff, and friends and family, Jim Wall. It is my honor and privilege to be here tonight to present to the city of Longmont the inaugural Jim Wall Leadership Excellence Award. For a lot of you, you know Jim Wall worked for you, and he was a major part of this organization, but in addition to that, he was also a member of Seagate, and we have a number of members with us today that are actually from that organization that I'd like to have stand up, just so that you can see the people who actually came here to support him today. And Longmont, you guys are a part of that, too, so, I mean... It's no surprise to all of you that almost 10 months ago, we lost Jim Wall. And this is especially close to me, because Jim was my professional mentor. And not only did he mentor me professionally, but he also mentored me in life, helping me be a better person, as well as be a better leader. And while I am the Director of Information Technology for the city of Thornton, I think that my role in that organization has grown and developed because of the relationship that I had with Jim Wall. And so, at the time of his passing, many of us within the organization were impacted. We were impacted by the loss of an individual who gave his time, his treasure, and his talents, not only to our organization, but to this city and to his community over and above. And so, at the time, we made a decision that we wanted to honor him going forward, and so, we created, at our October business meeting, the Jim Wall Leadership Excellence Award. And the summary of that award is simply, someone that goes so far above and beyond from a leadership perspective, that it's blatantly obvious that this person is deserving of an award that has Jim's name on it. And so, from all of us, to you, we are here to present with you, to you, the inaugural award, the Jim Wall Leadership Excellence Award. So, thank you. I'm not sure where you would like this, but this is actually...
So, are we getting it? Like, Longmont's getting it?
We would like to present it to the city of Longmont.
Oh, very cool, thank you.
In memorial of Jim, who is essentially our inaugural winner of the award that is being made in his name. We felt it was only fitting that the person who kind of held all of the attributes of such an amazing award be the very first person to receive it, you know, unfortunately, posthumously, but we felt it was appropriate that the first one go to the city of Longmont and to Jim Wall in his honor.
Well, thank you. Why don't we get a picture with you and your group?
Absolutely, thank you. Yes.
All right, great. And if city staff who worked with Jim wants to come up, too, that'd be great. That was the mayor and city council saying, come up. Oh, Jim's wife is also here. Yes, please come up. And I think that that award be held by Jim Wall's wife on behalf of the city, if you don't mind, ma'am. Okay, all right. Just, yes, by way, before we move on, I just think it'd be appropriate to take a moment that Jim would cheat. He's helped me out a time or two on technology, even on non-city things. So, thank you for his time. He was a great man, and good to see that that award's moving forward. He was, he was appreciated by all and missed by all. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the presentation on sharing the next light. Susan Wise Cup.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, I'm Susan Wise Cup with Longmont Power and Communications, and how do you follow that, other than to say Jim would support this program? In fact, did. The precursor is the Digital Divide Program, and so, happy to be here. So, very excited. We want to make sure you and the community are fully aware of sharing the next light. The focus, which is tied to your work plan, is to ensure school-aged children have access to high-speed, reliable internet. In particular, this program provides services to low-income families with K through 12 children. There has been some initial advertising and education with the launch, and that will continue in a variety of ways. Attached to the council communication is some basic information. We encourage the community, both individually and corporately, to donate through the Longmont Community Foundation, and we encourage low-income families with children to apply through Children, Youth, and Families. There are a number of staff here that worked hard to develop the logo, put processes in place, ensure the program works well and is sustainable. Sandy, thank you. From LPC, Kate and Lyra, stand up, so they know who you are. And from Children, Youth, and Families, Christina and Claudia. And Eric, from the Longmont Community Foundation, I think he had a conflict, and is not here, but of course, tremendous help. We are here for questions or comments.
Number one, thank you for looking out for our work plan. Okay? That's number one. Number two, thank you personally and on behalf of council for pushing something like this, because it, education on our children, the earlier, the better. That's the biggest impact we can have on our community over the long run, so thank you. Harold? Oh, sorry, Dr. Waters, your name was behind my podium, or my, behind the screen. Floor's yours.
How did I possibly get behind your screen?
Well, it just went like this. See, behind the screen? Now you're not behind the screen.
I just am curious. This is obviously response to a gap, or a need, an unserved need. How close do we come to satisfying the need with this initiative? How much of a, how much of a need is left unmet?
So, applications have been started, and I think Christina and Claudia, as they process those applications, they'll have a better feel for how many are applying versus how many we've raised funds for.
Christina's behind you.
So, I don't, you can talk about it, if you know what that is.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Waters, Christina Pacheco Sims, Children, Youth, and Families Division Manager. In the previous Digital Divide Program, at its high point, we served about 168 families. There was a point where we stopped advertising it, because we just didn't have the resources. So, we believe that this is a start to meeting that gap. We don't have a real hard number on just what that unmet need is, but we know that at least that 168 number is a good, is a good start.
Is a benchmark.
Is a benchmark, correct.
Or a baseline.
Exactly.
The only observation I would make is that access, access to the internet is kind of like clean air, right? Every child in this community has a right to both.
Absolutely.
So, good on you for what we're doing, and we need to just push hard on this.
Mayor, what I was going to say is, if you'll recall, when we presented our, the council work plan, and you all asked for things that you all could do, this was one of the items that we did put on, in terms of council, taking a vocal, public leadership role in this. I know Councilmember Martin has engaged in that conversation with us, but it is something that the more that we all can push and bring attention to this, the better we're going to do, and the more people that we can support. So, I just wanted to make that connection to your work plan as well.
Thank you. And then, Councilmember Martin?
I would like to understand a little bit more about the accounting of this. It feels to me that this is like software, that from where the city, from where the city stands, it shouldn't cost us very much to provide this, and so, I, I certainly don't have the ability to explain why we're fundraising, but I'm sure there's a good reason for it. So, I'd like everybody to hear that.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Martin, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. So, when we used to have Wi-Fi networks throughout the city, we had some money in the general fund that we used essentially to help with that portion of the Wi-Fi system. Since the Wi-Fi system has been essentially defunct, that budget still sits there. That's the budget that we're using to kind of feed and seed this particular program. As far as we are concerned, Longmont Power and Communications, this is the cost of their service, and so, we have to make sure that those funds don't mix, that they continue to stay whole. And so, by having the community foundation do the fundraising, and they've already raised some funds, using the city's ongoing budget from the general fund to help seed that, we're hoping that it will just continue to grow and grow.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Eric has just walked in the room, and I was hoping he could tell us how we're raising money to, to help do this.
Sorry, I ran. Oh, thank you. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Finley, what was the question again?
How can people donate to help?
Oh, easily, it's online at longmontfoundation.org. Just click on the Donate tab, and select the Sharing the Next Light Fund, right there. Very easy.
Very easy, and what was that again? Longmont Foundation.org.
Longmontfoundation.org, and select the Donate tab.
There we go.
I'm not sure we answered the question, so I want to go back to it again, so can you repeat your question again?
So, the city has to provide cable modems. I mean, what are the city's costs that, since the fiber is already on the curbs, what are the city's costs in doing this that need to be covered by fundraising? How does, how does, how does it work?
So, the costs are the, the final installation and the provision of service, and so, we are not charging an installation fee. That's all waived. It's only covering the monthly cost of service that we would normally collect from a, someone getting a 25-25 connection.
And the cost of service is, I mean, it seems to me that it would be easier to turn it on its head. The cost of installation and the cost of the modem is a real cost that is not incurred if the city doesn't install next light at a particular household. On the other hand, the ongoing cost of service is, in some sense, it costs you the same to maintain the network, no matter whether there are 2,000 people subscribing or 2,001 people subscribing, once the modem is paid for. So, why are we, why, why is it like that? And again, I'm sure there is an accounting reason why it's so, why you have to make your connect fees every month, but I don't understand it, and so, I would like to understand it better.
So, I think, go ahead.
Well, there are a number of costs that do increase with subscribers, the number of subscribers, whether it's to our CIS system vendor, it adds to, every time we add a subscriber, we're...
CIS?
Billing.
Our billing vendor, how we process all the bills, how we keep track of subscriptions. You know, as you add subscribers, it takes, it just takes more support, so all those things go into our operating costs, and we then pass those costs along to our subscribers.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I can, so we did this through our internal program, and so, you have the option where you can cover the ongoing operating costs, which does include all of the items that Susan mentioned, in terms of that ongoing cost. That also really relates to, and you'll hear us talk about bond covenants at the same time, so those are things that come in the mix to make sure that we're meeting that requirement. The second piece that we had an option to do is also to buy a modem. So, those are things, so it's modem cost and ongoing cost, related to all those components, as it relates then to what we have to do in order to ensure the bond covenants.
So, essentially, the bond covenants say, you can't give this away.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I guess, in a related way, or on a related topic, I don't see Karen Roney. Is she here tonight? All right, well, anyway, wherever she is, she can watch it later. Thank you. She got me, she, they, it looks like her and Christina Pacheco Sims got me, oh, there's Christina, they got me a copy of the Children, Youth, and Families Early Intervention Data Packet. So, I was wondering if, could we just take seven, eight minutes next week during study session, and put that on the agenda, just to present the highlights? And could we also get this included in our packet?
That one may be a little full. Can we do the study session after?
That's fine. I just want, basically, I want my fellow council to get it, and I want, again, this kind of discussion we should have in public, so it gets reported, and people know that we're doing it, and if we, if we stay quiet, you know, it's bad for the goal. So, so thank you, Christina and Karen. All right, let's move on to my favorite part of the evening, first call, public invited to be heard. So, I'm going to read your name. If you'll come up, restate your name and your address, that would be great. You're welcome back here anytime, Mrs. Wall. All right, Sharon O'Leary. You were the first contestant. You're playing, you're playing mayor bingo with me.
Sharon O'Leary, 534 Emery Street. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members. I'm here tonight to speak as the co-chair for the historic Eastside Neighborhood on Item 11A Land Development Code amendments. The memorandum I'm referring to is from Clarion Associates to Joni Marsh Planning Services in the city of Longmont. We would request that the city directs planning staff to continue and complete work with Clarion Associates as outlined in 3.3 Historic Standards and 3.4 Historic Preservation Standards. The historic Eastside Neighborhood, the Historic Eastside Neighborhood Association, also known as HENA, is a historic neighborhood, but it's also part of Longmont's larger historic district. It is important that HENA has the same original protection standards in the new land development code that we had with our previous RLE zoning, prior to the alteration last September. We ask that they be rolled over into the new land development code. These historic standard guidelines would apply within the historic Eastside Neighborhood to extend to areas zoned residential and not commercial. It is vital that 3.3 and 3.4 stay in the work plan and gets done. As a neighborhood, HENA would also like to be notified when the rough draft is completed with a modified standard, so the neighborhood can give feedback. We appreciate the thoughtful effort of city staff. On another note, in the same Clarion document, 1.4 Parking, it appears that Clarion and the staff will identify areas needing amendments based... the staff will identify areas needing amendments based on discussions with the city transportation staff. One of the known changes required is to include an exemption provision for parking within the general improvement district, also known as downtown. As a neighborhood, we are happy that the GID presently does not have a parking except exemption in place. This creates a level playing field for downtown parking and opens the door to discussions on how better to address the parking requirements of a vibrant downtown. The historic Eastside Neighborhood was just here last Tuesday, expressing the fallout ramifications into our residential neighborhoods as the lack of parking requirements and no plans for parking structures. This is a perfect opportunity for the city to direct Clarion to delve into deeper research on addressing downtown's parking needs without displacing it into residential neighborhoods. Please capitalize on this perfect opportunity, or at least do not amend the parking exemption. I would ask if there are people in the audience here tonight who are in agreement with this to please stand. I'd like to thank you for your time and your conscientious effort. Thank you.
We should just get the historic Eastside an office. See, they like my humor. No, I'm laughing because, no, no, I was making a joke. That was, so there's no office. No, no, no office. All right. Eva Sprague. Eva Sprague? Did I get that right? Okay, here she comes.
Good morning, guys. How are you guys doing? Um, I'm talking about, uh, Longmont Mill Home Park. Um, we have a lot of residents that lived there for a long time. I'm, I'm one of them.
You gotta get really close so they can't hear you.
I'm from Longmont Mill Home Park. Um, we have a lot of residents that's been living there since they're pretty much a young kid. I'm one of them. Um, we're hoping to be able to keep this park. And that's about it. That's all I, all I have to say.
Where, where's the park at?
525 15th Avenue, lot 35 in Longmont, Colorado.
Okay, yeah, right there. Um, okay, yeah. All right. Thank you. All right. Paul Heizer.
What?
Paul Heizer.
Hi, I'm Paul Heizer and my address is 525 15th Avenue, number 44.
Can you lift that up right to your, right to your lips?
That close.
Lift it up. So you'd have to bend over even. There you go.
Okay. I'm with the L, LMP, uh, co-op. And the LMP co-op greatly appreciates the city's support. Our housing, security and stability for the future is very important to us. We were provided the opportunity to obtain affordable housing and the majority of our community agreed this would provide a safer, more stable and secure mobile home co-op community. Myself and others are facing a fixed income social security which will barely cover our expenses. The cost of food and merchandise with inflation every year keeps rising and eats away at a fixed income. We have quite a few seniors. Being a senior citizen of Longmont, I feel that affordable housing is a very favorable way for the city to set an example that can expand to other areas of Longmont and help other, uh, lower income families. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bill Gahn? It's either Gahn or Gore.
Yeah, mine just kinda goes within, with Paul just said, yeah, we're just hoping you guys will approve the, for what we asked for, just so we can secure affordable housing in that area, you know, to try and keep our little community where it's at. So that's all I got to say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ben Sargent.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm here to express more support for 11A. Uh, I'm a homeowner in, uh, on, at 744 Atwood and, uh, got, you know, arrived here four years ago. Since that time, uh, Hena has really, uh, come up in the sense that we're really seeing a lot of people putting time into their yards and fixing up their homes. Uh, and it's a, just a beautiful gem of a neighborhood, uh, really critical for the long-term future of the city to, uh, preserve this unique neighborhood, uh, as part of Colorado history. And, um, I think it, it, uh, it just adds a charm to the town that, it's just irreplaceable if it goes away. So it's the kind of thing we have to be vigilant about and protect. And, uh, I appreciate your support in, in helping us, uh, again, getting the rollover of the protections that we previously had in RLE. Um, and I look forward to, um, celebrating when that's done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael King.
Hi, my name's Michael King. I'm the, uh, president of the LMP, uh, co-op, uh, that would be, I believe, letter M under your consent agenda. I, I know maybe it might have got a little confusing with the, uh, previous people. Uh, currently we're, um, asking the city of Longmont for $300,000, uh, to help us secure affordable housing in, uh, Colorado. Uh, as you know, with inflation, uh, cost of housing and, and, uh, wages don't always keep up with that. Uh, currently, uh, 50% of our, uh, of our members of our co-op, uh, live below the median, uh, income. Uh, so we've worked with Rock USA. Uh, they're a national lender for low-income housing. We've secured a loan, uh, with them. Uh, I asked for kind of the worst-case scenario and best-case scenario. Uh, and to get closer to our best-case scenario, uh, keeping us from 755 a month, uh, was to secure this, uh, this loan from the city. Um, other than that, I can tell you it's a pretty diverse community. Uh, on our board, we have certain rules, like we always have to have a Spanish, sorry, a Spanish speaker. And, uh, we also elected to always have a, uh, female elected to our board. Uh, the positives about going through with this is not only that you're securing the, uh, low-income housing for, um, the address 525 15th Avenue. It's a small trailer community of 36 trailers. Um, but not only are we going in this with Rock USA, which is a, uh, national lender, they have a support system afterwards as well. Um, so we will have, you know, people kinda coaching up on running meetings, taking minutes, uh, making sure the budget is, you know, done well. We've hired a, uh, a local, uh, property management group also to help us with, uh, collections. Uh, they've also got accounts on staff to help us as well. And, um, I'd just like to personally say thank you for your time and I hope you guys decide to help us out. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Simo.
Jamie Simo, 525 East 16th Avenue. Uh, thank you, Mayor Bagley and city council members for allowing me to speak tonight. I am here to talk about the second phase of the land development code, specifically that portion of the code that relates to the protection of rivers, streams, wetlands and riparian areas. That's chapter 1505, section 20. As a member of Stand With Our St. Rain Creek, I am encouraged that city council and staff are prioritizing amendments to chapter 1505, section 20, in order to strengthen protections for the St. Rain River and its surrounding riparian corridor. However, given the focus on the river corridors and area for economic revitalization for the city, I am concerned that the proposed timeframe for these amendments, as provided by Clarion Associates in the January 9th memorandum made available in your meeting packet, has them stretching into February 2020. Contrary to popular belief, my group is not against development in Longmont or even development along the St. Rain Corridor. I myself would be very happy to see a combined front-range community college campus and arts slash cultural center occupying where the derelict Sugar Mill is now, as long as that development does not encroach upon the 150-foot riparian conservation buffer. However, strengthening protections for the St. Rain River in the land development code, including providing more robust criteria for granting variances to the 150-foot riparian conservation buffer, must be done prior to any development or redevelopment considerations along the river corridor. As stated in Stan's presentation on January 4th during city council's work session, and thank you again for allowing us that time, riparian corridors are integral for water quality and flood protection, as well as for wildlife habitat and movement. If we want to protect the public investment of the RSVP and ensure the river is safe for recreation, it is integral that these protections are in place first. It would be good to have these amendments in place and ready to hand over to a new council in November. I was also interested to see that Clarion has been asked to research sustainability evaluation tools in use in other communities in Colorado. Longmont Sustainability Office has already developed a sustainability evaluation tool that was used to evaluate the city's St. Rain blueprint. Perhaps rather than starting from scratch, Clarion can revise this tool as needed? Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cameron McKay.
Hello, Cameron McKay, 923 Cory Street. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight to ask you to continue funding the Flex Bus Route, which is our city's only public transit connection to our neighbors in the north, Berthoud, Longmont, sorry, Berthoud, Loveland and Fort Collins. It's my main method of commuting to my job, actually, in Loveland, and I've ridden it for the last eight years. But it's not just engineers like me who benefit from having a good public transit link up to cities in the north. I've met a cross-section of our city while I've been riding this bus. I've ridden it with CSU students and professors, with machinists, with construction workers, with the graphics designers and scientists. It's used by a broad section of our community and it's an asset to us here. It's inexpensive, high-quality public transit, and it's something that makes our city better. So I ask you to please continue funding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Hess.
My name is Ann Hess, 1609 24th Avenue. I am also speaking in support of the transport Flex Bus Service between Fort Collins and Longmont. I work in Fort Collins and I've been using the transport Flex since it started in 2010. Um, at the beginning, I used it pretty occasionally. At this point, I take the bus about one or two days a week and I just think it's a great option. Um, and I'd like to see continued support for that service. Thank you.
Thank you. Strider Benston.
I do. Uh, Strider Benston, 951 17th Avenue. Uh, Mayor Bagley, council. Um, as often the case, I agree with everything I've thus far heard tonight. And, uh, Flex is cool. Uh, the, uh, trailer park, I live in a trailer park and we are indentured servants of the owner of the land who's taken a bribe from Comcast to prevent us from having our own next light. And there ought to be some kind of legal procedure to look into that. We apparently have no right to our own internet, even though we've been paying for it for many years. So, uh, uh, might be cool to look into it. Uh, as far as the bigger thing, uh, some folks came to my Sunday thing. I appreciate that. Um, one point, I did, uh, quote from Hunter Levin's, uh, Levin's book, A Finer Future. She lives in Boulder County. She wrote this book as a report to the Club of Rome about the possibility of us using what's left of our democratic rights to build a finer future with, um, you know, uh, agricultural co-ops, organic gardening, community organizations, uh, I mean, all the way down the line. And with our current, uh, national government, we are in severe peril. And basically, we have the extreme of Grover Norcas, uh, governor. Basically, he was working for the neoliberal economists and said that we gotta crush government to down to where it's small enough you can drown it in the bathtub. And that's what they're doing right now. But we've never had a president or anyone before who was working as an agent for a host, hostile foreign power. And that's what we got right now. Let's wake up, let's build from the bottom up and let's be aware enough to deal and understand what's going on on the macro level so that we're not destroyed by it. Germany in 1932 had only had a democracy for 12 years. We've had a democracy for 240 years. Ben Franklin was asked, what kind of a government do we have? He said, a republic if we can keep it. Let's keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benston. Ruby Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members.
Could we really get in there? You're soft-spoken and I know that everyone will wanna hear.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members. Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. I'm, I'm kinda disorganized right now, but let me see if I can get this together. In October 2018, Sherry Malloy, Stand With Our St. Rain Creek, presented to council over 700 postcards from residents asking you to please protect St. Rain Creek from impacts of encroaching urban development by ensuring a 150-foot setback is maintained in all sections of the creek and by enacting stronger protection laws and policies as recommended in Stand With Our St. Rain Creek's 418 letter to council. In addition, approximately 500 people signed a petition saying to, saying to you to protect St. Rain Creek. Please prioritize at the highest priority the revisions to the riparian section of the land development code and incorporate all our recommendations contained in Stan's 418 letter to you in the land development code. And I also have some concerns about, um, a couple statements in the city council memorandum. On page two, it states setbacks have significant impact on the implementation of any plan that addresses infill and redevelopment along the St. Rain Creek. I think that's, this is just conjecture. It's too, it's premature to even make that statement and it shouldn't even be in the memo. Right, moving forward, we're gonna be looking, staff and the public is gonna be looking at the setback issue and other issues related around, related to the riparian, um, corridor. So I'm, I'm disappointed that statement's in the memo. And also it says, "The work of the advisory panel of the city council related to Golds B3 and B4 will continue to inform the work on the blueprint and subsequent changes to the plan as directed." I don't remember, well, maybe they have since the council's retreat, that council directed staff to bring back the blueprint. I remember at the council's retreat when the assistant city manager asked, well, should we bring it back? There was silence among council members as to what should be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. And I don't know if it's Raoul or Paul Munoz. It's either a really cool R or a really lazy P. Is it Paul or Raoul? Raoul. All right. Really cool R it is.
Um, thanks for the opportunity to be here in front of you. I'm here to talk about the project here in the community. Okay.
It's important that you give a lot of people the opportunity. It's important that you give a lot of people the opportunity. And to give us the opportunity to have a new life. Thank you. Okay. All right, that is it for public invited to be heard. This is the first time that people said what they had to say instead of stretching it to three minutes. That was, that was, that was well done. All right, and then, um, let's move on then. Yeah, Dr. Waters?
Just a personal privilege. I left my coat.
All right, let's take a two-minute break.
Well, you know, I'll just go and grab it. I'm going to get up, leave the room for a moment.
All right, we will, we will, we will make sure we don't have any important votes until you get back. We're just going to read the consent agenda. No, no, what I mean is, we're not, no, 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 we're not going to, you will be back by the time they finish reading it. So, City Clerk Quintana, can you go ahead and read the consent agenda and the readings of title by first reading?
Mayor, on Consent Agenda Item 8A is Ordinance 2019-12, a bill for an ordinance approving the First Amendment to Lease Agreement with Longmont Win Air Company. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February 12, 2019. 8B is Ordinance 2019-13, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 4.10 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Special Districts, Policies and Procedures. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February 12, 2019. Item 8C is Ordinance 2019-14, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport, Hangar Parcel H14G, the premises, to Rick Bastelier, tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February 12, 2019. Item 8D is Resolution 2019-06, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Transportation for grant funding for the First Avenue and Emery Street intersection improvements project. Item 8E is Resolution 2019-07, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement for fiber management between the city of Longmont, the town of Estes Park, the city of Loveland, the city of Fort Collins, and Platte River Power Authority. Item 8F is Resolution 2019-08, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Denver Regional Council of Governments for planometric data. Item 8G is Resolution 2019-09, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the University of Colorado Boulder for student-led design assistance for pedestrian spaces in and connecting to downtown Longmont. Item 8H is Resolution 2019-10, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the 2019 intergovernmental agreement for bus service between the city of Fort Collins and the city of Longmont. Item 8I is Resolution 2019-11, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the regional transportation district for employee eco-passes for 2019. Item 8J is Resolution 2019-12, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for a library grant. Item 8K is Resolution 2019-13, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving a voluntary alternative agreement for the brickstone development as satisfaction of the city's inclusionary housing requirements. Item 8L is amend 11 capital improvement program projects. 8M is approve Housing and Human Services Advisory Board recommendations on funding for two projects from the Affordable Housing Fund. And item 8N is approve City Council Retreat Agenda. And Mayor staff was going to pull 8K.
8K, all right. What, anyone else on council have any items they'd like to pull? Mayor Protem?
I'd like to pull item 8B.
Okay. Councilmember Peck. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to pull 8G.
8G, okay. Dr. Waters? Go ahead, try it again.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'd like to pull item 8A. And item 8M, let me scroll down to make certain I'm giving you the right item, or is that right? Yes, 8M, yes.
All right, people have pulled the ones I wanted. Councilmember Finley?
I move the consent agenda minus A, B, G, K, and M.
I'll second it. All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings on the following matters. First of all, Ordinance 9A, 2019-06, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019. Is there a staff, is there a staff report on this issue? No? Okay. Are there any questions from council? All right, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2019-06. Mr. Thompson, Jeff Thompson, would you like to come down, please? Just like public first call, you've got three minutes, and the time is yours.
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Sumner Street. These are questions that a responsible mayor or council member would ask the city manager about this. So I'd appreciate it if the city manager would maybe take some notes or write these questions down so he can answer them when somebody asks them. First question is, why is he asking for permission to spend bond money before the council has authorized the bonds? He's asking you for permission to spend money that he doesn't have and money that the city council hasn't authorized him to get by issuing bonds. If he issued bonds now, it would be an illegal act. Second, why is he asking permission to spend more money than he actually intends to spend? It's a one-year appropriation. I just heard from Jim Golden this afternoon that he will not even ask the city council for permission to issue the bonds until the summer or fall. Surely, the city manager doesn't think he can do all the design work and get the contracts released, choose contractors, get all the work done, and pay the final invoice in just a few months. So he's asking for permission to spend a lot more money than he knows he's ever going to spend. Three, why did he tell us the cost of the projects is $32,825,000 when he knows the cost of the projects will be much higher due to the costs of borrowing? Estimated, the total estimated cost of these projects is $53,190,507. Shouldn't there be some sort of truth in writing city council communications requirements? Four, how does he account for the $2,659,525 annual repayment cost associated with these projects? Where is that in the appropriation? And number five, what is the bond issue expense? Isn't that simply subtracted from the proceeds of the sale of the bonds? At any rate, I don't think it's in the $32,825,000, is it? The city council is being extremely irresponsible about debt. They want to put, including the Windy Gap fiasco. The city council wants to, this year, lay an additional, about $120 million of debt on our dock. And I just want to say, would you please all educate yourself about the debt crisis in this country? So we can have a meaningful discussion when this comes up.
Can you cut him off, please? And Mr. Thompson? Excuse me, you dropped something when you're, right when you came to the podium. Thank you. All right. All right, is there anyone, actually, anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, I don't see anybody. I'm going to go ahead and ask a few questions. That's okay? Yeah, I'm just going to ask the questions he asked. Oh, yeah, is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, at this point, we would like to close the public hearing. All right, so, Mr. Golden, question number, why, why is the city, why are you and Harold or the city in general asking for bond money? Before we have given authority as city council members or as a city council body, we haven't authorized such bonds.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Chief Financial Officer. So as the council's aware, we put 11 projects on the ballot in November for approval for funding through bond issuance. It's a plan to issue bonds later this year because we can't begin to pay debt service on those projects until 2020 because that's, we have one more payment on an old bond in 2019 that frees up dollars for us to be able to move in that direction. So we did ask for authorization in November. So over $32 million of projects, which we are able to begin to do design on this year. Obviously, these are multi-year projects for some of these projects, so we wanted to get moving on them as soon as possible. As far as a bond goes, as was mentioned, we don't anticipate to have the sale of the bonds till probably around mid-year because of the debt service issue and when that's going to begin to kick in. And we want to be able to have dollars available to repay the debt service, so the longer we can wait to issue, the better. But at the same time, we can, we can begin to spend money on these projects, which is why we're asking for appropriation authority now. And we'll be able to use dollars from the Public Improvement Fund that's available today and elsewhere in the city so that we can use our pooled resources and reimburse those dollars that are spent once the bonds are issued. We've asked for authority for reimbursement within the debt question for those, those projects, and so we're allowed to reimburse ourselves from the bond proceeds for that purpose.
Right.
What else did I?
Why, why is the city management asking for more money than he intends to spend? First of all, are you intending on spending more money? Are you asking for, are you asking for more money than you intend to spend?
Mayor Bagley, I'm not going to try to, I think what I heard was maybe the opposite, was that we were intending to spend more.
Well, that was the third question.
Okay.
So, yeah, we go ahead and answer them.
I don't think, I don't think we're asking for more money than we're intending to spend. We are asking for the amount for the projects as, as we ask the voters to authorize.
All right, so why then did you, why then are you telling us that the project will be $32 million when you, when it's been alleged this evening that the real cost is $53 million approximately because of borrowing costs?
So the debt service for the projects will begin in 2020, the annual amount of that debt service, which I think Mr. Thompson referred to an estimate of the amount of that debt service that will be, begin to be budgeted in 2020 for the next 20 years after that. So that's, I assume where that, that estimate of cost is coming from. We're talking about the, the project cost is being, is being requested tonight as an appropriation, and then in '20 and beyond, we'll begin to budget for the debt service.
And then, how does the city manager account for the actual annual repayment cost? How will it be repaid?
That's, that's the answer.
Yeah, okay. And then, number five, what is the actual expense of the bond issued? Do we have to pay something else, or is that rolled into the actual overall cost of the bond?
There will be bond issuance costs. I don't have an estimate on top of my head here. It'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars for working with the financial advisors and bond counsel to get the documents put together and take us through the sale. There'll be some underwriting cost for whoever's purchasing the bonds. And I think, off the top of my head, I think it's about a $200,000 estimate if we do all in one bond issue. Haven't decided yet whether we're doing one bond issue or multiple issues. We're still trying to get an estimate of how long these projects will go and whether or not we can do them all within a certain time period.
And then, how, how do we pay for that $200,000?
That's all part of the debt service estimate that we mentioned earlier, about 2.6-something million dollars.
Thanks, Mr. Golden.
So to get specific, when he says we're evaluating it, we're trying to look at what we expect the cash flow to be in terms of the projects that were approved by the voters of Longmont, and then we'll determine, do we do that in one issuance or two? What we're trying to do is maximize our capability and minimize the interest rate. The other question is, why do you want a reimbursement resolution? It's to get started because the other item that we're chasing is inflationary cost. And so those two things come together that we're trying to maximize the benefit to the community.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move Ordinance 2019-06.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Finley and seconded by Councilmember Peck. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote. That passes unanimously. Moving on to 9B, Ordinance 2019-07, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real properties known as the Keister Property, the Smith Property, and the Mountain Shores Property to Jim Wild. Are there any, first of all, there's no report, correct? All right, are there any questions from council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open this up for public hearing. All right, seeing no one, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Mayor Protem?
Okay.
She didn't push the button, but she moved, and I thought she pushed the button, so you're going to do me a solid and make that motion.
All right. I move Ordinance 219-07.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. All right, moving on to 9C, Ordinance 2019-08, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Bogot Property to Gary Bogot. I'm assuming there's no report. All right, are there any questions from council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for public hearing. All right, seeing no one, let's close the public meeting. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move 0219-08.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Peck, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, item 9D, Ordinance 2019-09, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Modern West, the Modern West Annexation, generally located east of the airport and north of Nelson Road, and zoning the property MUE, or Mixed Use Employment. We don't have a staff report, do we?
Yes.
We do? All right, let's take a few minutes for that.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Ben Ortiz, Planning and Development Services. Before I begin tonight on the presentation, I wanted to bring something to your attention that the Second Resolution for Statutory Compliance, which you were going to consider tonight, it didn't get uploaded into the council agenda or into your packet. So what we're going to ask you, ask city council to do is, is open and close a public hearing as you'd normally do, and then rather than make a motion on the item, we're requesting that you continue it to February 12, which is the next regular session where you then consider the ordinance and make a finding about the Second Resolution of Statutory Compliance. I do intend on making a presentation tonight along with the applicant, but before I begin, I just wanted to see if you had any questions about that.
So just to be clear, since I'm the one that will probably screw it up if it gets screwed up, you're going to give, you're going to give a staff report?
Yes.
At which point, you're asking that we, I mean, you're asking that we go ahead and have the public hearing, that we wait till the next regular session in three weeks to actually vote on 9D?
Yes, we're, we're asking that the item be continued until February 12.
All right, well, then, let's go, let's go ahead and not, we won't have a public hearing tonight? Because we're going to, we're going to hold it again in two weeks anyway. Is there anyone here who is here specifically for this public hearing? All right, then we will have a public hearing tonight. Okay? Go ahead.
Okay, great.
And we'll still have one in three weeks, too, so.
Okay, okay, great. With that said, the property is located north of Nelson Road and approximately .3 miles east of Airport Road. The eastern property boundary touches the western edge of the Anderson Storage Facility property. Boulder County... Boulder County Assessor designates this property as agricultural, and it's approximately 15 acres in size. The Envision Longmont designates the property as mixed-use employment, and the applicant is requesting mixed-use employment zoning, which is consistent with the Envision Longmont plan. The intended use is a light industrial park for manufacturing, warehousing, and office support space, and a light industrial use is consistent with that requested zoning. So, the shaded portions of the annexation map show where the proposed annexation is contiguous with other city zone properties. State law requires at least one-sixth of the property to be contiguous with city zone property in order to be eligible for annexation. The development is proposed to occur in three phases. Street connectivity will come by way of a proposed east-west collector road on the north side of the property and a proposed local road on the west side of the property, which will connect up with the, the new east-west collector as, on the north and Nelson Road on the south. There will be bicycle and pedestrian connectivity across the three phases, and the planned notes were added stating that the property is subject to the annexation agreement and that all future development of the property must conform to the approved concept plan. The annexation agreement is largely boilerplate. There are a couple of items that are worth noting. It will require land dedication for a new east-west collector road and a north-south local road, and it will allow for the agricultural uses to continue on the undeveloped portions of the property through commencement of the development of the final phase. So, the first resolution of statutory compliance was approved on December 18th, 2018 on the consent agenda. This deemed the petition to annex the property complete and that the petition complies with state law. The second resolution of statutory compliance determines whether or not the land to be annexed is contiguous with city zone property along at least one-sixth of its border. In order to meet the contiguous requirement, at least 761 linear feet would need to be touching the city zone property, and in this case, we're looking at approximately 2000, 2,700 linear feet touching city, city zone property. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they met on June 27th, 2018 to consider this item, and they unanimously recommended approval of the annexation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, and they also have a presentation for your consideration.
Barb Brunk, Resource Conservation Partners, PO Box 1522, Longmont. Derek Rajo, who is owner of Modern West LLC, is also here with us this evening, and our architect, Erin Bagnell. Ben went through the location. The plan here is for a vibrant mixed-use employment, light industrial development. We're really excited to be going forward under the new code. The property is compliant with the comp plan. You can see it's designated mixed use. The uses we want are compliant with the comp plan. You can see the zoning surrounding this property is all mixed-use employment, so once this property is annexed, it's almost an enclave, so it will be, continue that mixed-use employment zone over the property, and the proposed uses are consistent with that zone. This is how we meet the statutory requirements. Ben looked at it. The permit of the property is 4569. The contiguous is 2705. Requirement is 761, so we exceed the requirement for contiguous under state statute. The application as presented meets all of the review criteria for annexation and zoning and concept plan. The complete criteria is outlined in the Planning and Zoning Commission communication and the staff report that's included in your packets. I am prepared this evening to go through all of those if you would like me to, but in the interest of your choice or my choice, I'll just say that it is on the record and in your packet that we meet that criteria. We request that you move forward in a way that's compliant with the legal council's way to move this forward, and we'll see you again on the 12th of July, of February. Thank you, and we're here to answer questions.
All right, great. Any questions from council? I guess, I guess no one's in queue. The only question I have is, so, right now, there's one road going into the annex, annexation, correct? A little enclave there? And then, but once it's built out, will there be additional roads to have access to this property?
Yeah, let me show you the concept plan. Here, this is better. So, if you look, Rogers Road is, is along the north, and there'll be a local east-west street that connects from Rogers Road over to Hoover, through the next set. And then, there's also a north-south connection down to Nelson, and then Anderson Road, which is on the east side of the RV, that storage down there, they also go down to Nelson. So, it's, it's integrated into the neighborhood.
So, it's not going to be just one street in, one street out?
Oh, no. We need the standard.
Three or four.
We need the standard.
Perfect, just double checking. Councilmember Peck?
Also, there were bicycles and feet and all those other things.
Bicycles and feet. I like bicycles and feet. All right, Councilmember Peck?
Actually, I like this concept plan and development, but I do have one question when it comes back for the second, second reading. I was wondering if the city could also give us their transportation plan for Nelson Road because, as I said with the last annexation, it seems like we keep putting more and more traffic on Nelson Road, and I just want to know the city's viewpoint, the transportation department, as compared to the developer's transportation plan. So, if you could bring that back when, on February 12th, that would be great. Thank you.
I also wanted to point out, just so council knows, this road is, as you all have been talking about, the Veterans Community Project, that's part of this road right there, is, I believe it's somewhere in that area. So, that's another project that you all will be seeing.
I've got some questions. Nick Wolfram, could you come up? I'm kidding, you're kidding. You're retired, you're allowed to sit back there. All right, Paulie Christensen, Mayor Protem? Scared you didn't know.
I have a question about the north-south road. I keep asking about that. It looks to me like it's Dry Creek Road. Is that right?
Hold on, let me get to a bigger map. Okay, so, the road, sorry, the road along the west edge of the property?
No, the one on the east.
The one on the east? There is no road on the east edge of the property. This road is a.
No, I know, but there, the east-west, yeah, the east-west road goes into one that goes north-south, I'm sorry. And the north-south road looks like it's Dry Creek Road being extended all the way to Rogers Road, which is extending it right through somebody's farm.
Could you go, go over to the bigger picture?
Yeah, we need a bigger map again, sorry.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, keep going. Keep going.
This map, so.
Yes, I'm going to let, see what goes past Willow, Willow Farm Park on the, to the right.
The right.
Mayor Bagley and members of council, Chris Hoffer with Public Works and Natural Resources. The property that we're looking at tonight is west of Dry Creek. So, I think as you were looking at the map there, you see that.
I'm looking at the dotted green line. That looks like an extension all the way to Rogers Road, of Dry Creek Road. Is that right?
That would be Fordham Street.
Oh, it's Fordham, okay.
Which is intended to extend through and which is part of Envision Longmont.
Yeah, okay. I'm thinking of the one just to the east of that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else, we're going to go ahead and open it up for the first half of our public hearing. Come on up. And I just asked that, you did great asking questions and stuff, but let's just keep it to three minutes, and once I say three minutes, I'd appreciate it if you'd bring the comments to a close.
None of my questions were answered, and you and the council members would know that if a single one of you were the least bit financially literate or responsible. That was just outrageous. On this, could you just quickly tell me how many acres are involved?
16?
Okay, that's smaller than I thought it was, but there is an annexation agreement. Has the city attorney reviewed the annexation agreement? And I want to know what the annexation agreement says with regard to water? Because this city, I might just ask you, has anybody on this city council, I've been talking about this over and over and again with the city council, about Chapter 1405 or municipal code, which is the raw water requirement? And I would really like to know if anybody on the city council has bothered to read it? Or if what they're trying to do is repeal it without an ordinance, just repeal it by ignoring it? The raw water requirement is three acre feet of water, water rights that will yield three acre feet in a 100-year drought, so it can be added to our water supply for every acre annexed or cash in lieu so that we can buy those water rights. And as you don't want to acknowledge, if we had been enforcing this raw water requirement, we would have probably 50 million to 100 million more in our water acquisition fund. It's missing. It has been misappropriated, or it was never collected, and that would be misappropriating the money. So, one of the problems is that you generally don't collect these cash-in-lue fees until the property is actually developed unless you put it in the annexation agreement that the party requesting the annexation is willing to pay the cash-in-lue fees immediately because we desperately need that money. You can put anything in this annexation agreement you want to, and so it should be worded that way. So, you should find out, are they going to be transferring any water rights to us, and has that been evaluated? And then, do we have a provision in the annexation agreement so that at the time of annexation, they will pay the cash-in-lue fees? Because I have a feeling what's going on is these cash-in-lue fees never get collected.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. And I'm not going to ask because I already know the answer. The answer is yes. We wait, no, they don't have it in this annexation agreement. I'm willing to bet that it's in there, but they're going to be paying it upon, what is it, the first, first filing? What's the, what's the official term that you guys use? I always forget.
A couple of things, Mayor Barb Brunk. This application was reviewed by the Water Board, and this applicant will dedicate their historic groundwater, give it over to the city for the privilege of the annexation at the time it's annexed. The Water Board determines what the deficit is, and that's the difference between three acre feet and, and what is on the land. And per the code, water is required at the time of final plat, the deficit. So, we will make up the deficit, either give water to make up the deficit or pay cash-in-lue to make the deficit at the time of final plat. And in my, all of my experience working with the city of Longmont.
Has it ever happened at time of annexation?
I have never seen anyone not meet the raw water requirement as they develop their property. It's a sacred cow in this community, and we do it every time, so.
Then, why are we missing 100 million dollars in the water acquisition?
Where, okay.
Okay, one more thing. In your packet, you have an annexation agreement. Under 6.5 raw water requirements, it says, before the annexation ordinance is recorded with the county clerk and recorder, the owner shall convey to the city all historical water rights pertinent to the property according to the city's raw water requirements. The owner shall satisfy any raw water deficits according to the city's then-existing raw water requirements. So, right now, it says at final plat, if something changes, before we develop the property, we would meet the standard at that time.
All right, I've asked staff to explain that conundrum before. I'm not going to ask again. We're not missing 100 million dollars. All right, let's go ahead, and we're not going to vote, but does anyone else want to come up and say anything? Mr. Bichette? No? Okay, all right. Then, let's go ahead and move on to 9E. Oh, yeah, well, I guess we could just, I move that we table it till the next regular session. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, 9E, ordinance 2019-10, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a portion of right-of-way on Deer Pond Court within the Harvest Junction Village subdivision, generally located north of Quail Road, south of Western Sky Circle, and west of Martin Street. Let's go ahead, are there any, is there, there's no staff report, and no questions from council? Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move ordinance 2019-10.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Finley and seconded by Councilman Waters. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Item 9F, ordinance 2019-11, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of water line easement, generally located within Lot 9 of Diagonal Industrial Circle, City of Longmont, Boulder County, Colorado. Any staff report? All right, no questions from council at this point. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public hearing on this ordinance. Anyone want to say anything? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please? All right, thank you. Do we have a second? All right, it was moved by Councilmember Peck, seconded by, by the Mayor Protem, and let's vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, we doing okay? Can we move on, or do you want a five-minute break? Let's, three minutes, we're negotiating here. We're going to take a three-minute, 17-second break. We're going to take a three-minute, 17-second break.[386.55]
And the district's residents would pay significantly more property tax without any commensurate public benefit. Three, or under this is, a higher mill levy in district projects make these residents less inclined to support other city property tax increases. Buyers of homes in district projects are often unaware of the higher property taxes in their development and may become upset when property taxes increase. Residents may be surprised to find out the price of their homes did not include the price of streets and utilities in their development and that they may pay for this over a thirty-year or more period through their property taxes. It also creates a completely different governmental entity that is only regulated by the state, by either DOLA or DORA, who don't actually have any ability to enforce anything and don't actually have the ability to regulate it either, including many people, many special districts who are out of compliance with their yearly record-keeping and reports. There are many of them who are going bankrupt. This is why we very carefully crafted three pages of stuff that we're now proposing to eliminate. I see no benefit for this. These are often services that should be provided by the city. It saves the developer a whole lot of money, that's why developers would like this. It saves the city some amount upfront, but not in the long run. And it balkanizes the city, so I object to even considering this.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I do have a question, because I actually don't feel that, you know, the time that we've spent in some of our study, in like our work sessions on a Friday morning or whatever, or if it was a pre-session before council where we had the presentation by special counsel, I don't feel like I still quite got enough information on some of the legal mechanisms. Specifically, as Mayor Protem was alluding to, the regulation by the state, you know, it does kind of make me a little nervous when I see the municipality has a level of control in quotation marks in our packet when it comes to that. So if, so that would be my first question is, what enforcement mechanisms, if any, does the city have if this is overseen by the state? I mean, I don't know if there's anybody here to answer that question or not.
So I think, and I'll ask Tony to come up and help with this, I think the key piece is that ultimately the city council has to approve the service plan, which includes the financial plan. So as it is drafted, what it will do at that point is, as they bring that forward, you all will be able to review the financial information, the service plan, and then make a decision on that particular case. This does not obligate the city council to approve it when that's brought forward if it does not meet your intent. So really, it is at that point where the majority of the control really rests with the council and whether or not to approve it.
So, but for instance, if they're not in compliance with this plan that we would go, or this agreement, basically, would the municipality or the city have any enforcement mechanism to say dissolve a metro district?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney, I'm not unsure about enforcement mechanisms of the service plan. We can certainly talk to our special counsel, Carolyn White, and come back with that information. I can provide that to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so therefore, I guess I have a few too many questions to be able to support this set this time.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First of all, I really like metro districts. They make sense, and I think that they do help us economically and fiscally with the city. However, I have problems with the residential special districts. When I was reading the objectives of our, of our land code for that, number five says, "The reason to not have a metro district or a special district in a residential area was to prevent the shift of development risk to non-developers." So, Tony, I want to thank you for talking to me today and explaining a lot of this. But my concern is, is this a way, because it's interesting to me that this is coming up right now, is this a way in the residential special district to circumvent our IZ? And the reason I'm saying that is we've spent a lot of time trying to make an affordable city. I talked to DORA today, and if there's a resale of these units, that a realtor does not have to disclose that there are any mill levies here, whether it be school district or special districts. So on a resale value of these, how do we keep our inclusionary housing when, of course, the cost of the unit will be the same, but where they're going to pick up the extra costs is on their property tax, and it could be a couple thousand dollars more for the inclusionary, I'm sorry, for the special district? And here's what I'm thinking, and correct me if you don't think this way, but, for example, if somebody wants to come in and put in a development of two or 300 homes with a 12% inclusionary housing ordinance, but they, but in their concept plan, they have a clubhouse and a swimming pool, and they've decided they would make that development a special district, paying for the clubhouse and swimming pool, so the developer does not have to put that money in, but the resident is picking that up. So our inclusionary housing, I'm just concerned this will circumvent it, and that's just one, one thing that I have. I think that there should be mill levy caps on it if we do this, if the rest of the council passes it. The other thing, number seven in the objectives, was we were supposed to minimize excessive tax burdens upon city residents in special districts. That's not what this does, so I'm a little concerned about the way it's written. Tony, what do you think? Do you think that that?
So, Mayor Bagley, councilmember Peck, Tony Chacon, redevelopment manager, relative to your first question, as it pertains to the affordable housing or participation. So first of all, the developer would still have to be in compliance with that particular ordinance in place. So what you need to do is separate the district from the developer. So the developer, builder of the homes, would be responsible for going ahead and paying or contributing to the affordable housing or the inclusionary housing ordinance. The general premise of the district is, yes, it does reduce cost to the developer.
Right.
And it's presumptive that that cost then would be reflected in the sales price of the units. So typically, they should be less expensive than if he had to pass on the cost of infrastructure, for example, to the home. The developer, high probability that the cost of the affordable housing is going to be passed along one way or another. So it could be reflected if he did not use a metro district or a special district, and he was, just wanted to recoup the cost for the infrastructure. He would capture, he would basically assign some portion of that affordable housing cost to the price of the house. So let's say he's, the cost to sell, build and sell the house was $450,000, and the proportional cost for the infrastructure was $20,000. Without a district, he would likely apply that $20,000 to the $450,000 to capture that cost. Under the premise of the metro district, he could still sell the house at $450,000, and then he recoups the cost, the affordability, by not having to build the infrastructure effectively. And then that house pays that price over a period of time. So the housing affordability, at some point, that house is going to absorb it. The question is, how does that impact the affordable unit in terms of their taxes into the future? Because they would be still contributing towards that payment.
And that, yep, and that is, that's my concern.
Right.
That they will be for 20 years or 30 years, however, along that special district.
Yep. So the second part of your question, though, relates to the improvements. So they would have to submit a service plan. The service plan would lay forth those improvements that are to be included in the district, the cost, and how they are going to pay for that, financing for that. As part of that assessment, the council can decide whether or not they are going to allow certain elements or improvements to be included in the service plan. So, for example, if they wanted to build a clubhouse, and they put that in the service plan, the council could say, "No, we don't want the cost of the clubhouse to be incorporated into the service plan." And therefore, that cost would not be pushed out into the tax burden. So the service plan gives a lot of discretion as to what they can build and how they can pay for it.
I think, to answer another one of your questions, the service plan can also cap the mill levy. So if they come forward and they bring a proposal, and let's say they have items A through M, council has the ability at that time, when considering it, to go, "Okay, we don't want G through M, and the mill levy that you have here is X, and we may cap it at X or X plus Y, whatever it is," so that when council does approve the service plan, they have the ability to cap the mill levy, so it just doesn't continue to grow over time.
And if I could just add to that, you can also differentiate the mill levy between residential and other uses.
We already have in the original code, a mill levy, a mill levy cap of 50 mils. Why would we leave, so my suggestion would be to leave it at a 50-mil cap and not leave it up to the discretion of council to decide on that mill levy when chances are, not that many people on council would even understand what the mill levy is or what it means. Not this council, you know, we're looking at--
No, 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 not us council. We're smart.
No.
Thank you. Is that a motion? We are smart? I second that.
That's not an insult.
No, no.
I'm just talking about, you know, just Councilman Rodriguez said he, he doesn't feel that we have had enough input on this to be able to actually make a good decision on it. So that wasn't an insult, it's the fact that this is a learning curve.
Oh, no, I was just being a goofball.
Yeah, I know. So, so I think that I am not going to vote for this at this time. I would like it brought back after I have more confidence, basically, in what we're doing.
Councilmember Waters.
I'm biting my tongue to not say, "Thank you, Mayor Goofball," but I'm going to say, "Thank you, Mayor Bagley."
Same diff, you just said it in a polite way. That's awesome.
So I am going to support this, but I, and I have a couple of questions. I just, I guess the first just observation is that this is not a one-size-fits-all deal. The fact that the state, the state requires, that somebody who wants to create a district has to put together a plan, both financial and service plan, that we get a chance to approve? And we are under no obligations to approve anything that's proposed. We have total discretion. So we get a chance to ask whatever questions we want to ask, include, exclude, that's totally up to us in terms of protecting the interest of the city. But there's also, when it comes to special districts, the interest of the residents. If we, if we don't, if we say maintain status quo, we've said to our communities, we don't trust them to make decisions for themselves when they, when they have an opportunity to. That seems to me the kind of assumption I'd like not to make about the wisdom or the willingness of residents at times in parts of the city to tax themselves because they want more than we're going to be able to give them otherwise. And a library district would be an example, from my perspective. And just on, just to, we're to drill down on library districts, we have, it's one of our, you know, from our customer satisfaction or resident satisfaction survey we saw in December, it's one of our great assets. And yet, what we provide for cities of 95,000 is an approximation of what most other cities provide in terms of library services. We just happen to do a great job of it. And if our residents wanted more of an asset they already value, choosing not to do what's on this agenda, we would be saying to them, "You don't have that choice." I just, I don't understand why we would do that. But here, here were some of my questions. The, the, in your, in the write-up, there are two references that I just want to clarify. One is, they're on, I don't know, the paragraph that speaks to, the code currently emphasizes the establishment of a district means to facilitate primarily commercial and industrial development. The use of the district to support residential development is limited to inclusion of a mixed-use development while the maximum residence, and on and on. Where it takes me is to limitations on mill levies. That's where I was going with my question. And how does, how does that apply to a special district like a library district? That, the particular paragraph, the next to the last paragraph in the write-up, you're not looking at it, but whoever wrote it up?
Yeah, councilmember Waters, if, I assume you're saying, how do you effectively establish the mill levy?
The specific paragraph, the next to the left, last paragraph, left me with this question. How does, I'm going to get to the, I confused, I conflated two questions.
Okay.
I'm going to get to the mill levy in a minute. How does that paragraph apply to a special district, a library district in particular in the write-up?
Okay, if I could clarify, so a special district and a metro district are effectively the same type entity with the exception, the special district only provides one level of service or improvement. So with a library, it would be specific to that library. A metro district can have a range of services and/or improvements that the collective value of that then is rolled into the tax bill. So typically, the more services and improvements you have, the higher the, the higher the cost associated with that, and that could impact the mill levy to be relatively higher. So if it's usually a special district, which was one type service or improvement, just by virtue of the lower cost associated with it possibly, then your mill levy could be much less than that.
So you back, based on your service package, you back into a mill levy?
So yes, what they do is you would figure out what your total costs are, then you would determine what the mill levies would be for each of those, either commercial or residential valuation.
So is the, does the state impose the 50-mil levy limit?
I do not believe, but--
Mayor and council, there is a mill levy cap in the ordinance as it stands. It's not in your ordinance in the packet because we didn't have direction to amend that.
But is, well, so my question is, in state statute, is there a limitation on the mill levy?
I do not believe so.
Okay. I thought there was, but you know better than I. Because I thought it was a 50-mil levy limit. And then there's a follow-on question to that, you make reference to subject to Tabor. I've seen, I've seen plans from CML where the special or metro district, and I'm not, I think maybe both, but I'd have to go back and check, their mill levies were set at 50, but the language in the, in the authorizing, whatever the authorizing ordinance was or the plan, allowed it to grow with inflation. So I've seen 50, I've seen plans that started with 50-mill levies, but now are 57, whatever, based on, but that was cooked, that was baked into the plan to begin with.
If I could respond to that, just from experience, that most jurisdictions typically work with the 50-mil cap. There have been exceptions where I've seen 60 mils in some circumstances, very rare, usually it's around that 50. So CML most likely had done a survey and found that most restrictions are at the 50-mil level.
Yeah, I just hadn't seen any that, that I saw, and there are examples that started at more than 50 mils. There were some that were more than 50, but they had, they had grown with inflation. And I'm not certain what the language of that would be till, that how Tabor allows the growth of the mill levy based on increase in the cost of services or whether it's debt or, or direct services.
I'm going to ask Jim, but I think it has to be, that language for the growth has to be in the vote, where you authorize it--
So you would de-Taborize at the time, or untaborize, or never Taborize?
Mayor Bagley, members of council, actually, it's degallagherize is what it's called.
Degallagherize, okay.
So I believe that the special council talked to us about that, that night, in that because there's changes to the mill levy limits when the ratio changes under Gallagher, it may lower the amount of a mill levy that you can generate, or you can only get so much dollars now, less dollars, out of the mill levy cap that's in place. And so it allows that cap to be adjusted upwards, but it is something you have to vote in when you're, when you're setting your mill levy. So you say 50-mil levies, 50 mils with a Gallagher adjustment.
So it's good that Jim's here, because I, haven't I also seen plans where, in fact, I've had, I've had a conversation recently with a developer who, who would like to create a metro district or use a metro district to, to jumpstart infrastructure development for, infrastructure for a development he wants to build in Longmont. In the initial, what he, what he wants to do is put together a financial plan that would set a 40-mil, a 50-mil level, 50-mil assessment for the special district. Forty mils of which would be used to service debt incurred to build the infrastructure, 10 mils set aside to contract with the city or to just send revenues to the city. I'm not certain if that's a transaction or simply a revenue stream. His plan is a 20-year amortization of the debt, the end of which all 50 mils would be directed to the city. Now, that's his plan, and I've, I think I've seen other plans offered by CML that reflect similar kinds of approaches where, over the arc of time, the city benefits from new revenue streams that would be new to the city but created at the time that the special or metro districts are approved.
Mayor Bagley, and I'll speak, maybe Tony has some comment on that. I guess, to me, you'd have to see the whole financial plan and to see what kind of service the city's being asked to provide over the first 20 years and maybe the, after that. Otherwise, why would we want--
Got a little more money?
Yeah, we just, well, I think, you know, when we talk about residential, residential mill levies, you're getting to sensitive areas.
Sure.
And we've been there before in the past when it comes to special districts, and we've had citizens here talking to city councils about, "Why am I getting taxed differently?" So after 20 years, when that debt goes away, if that mill levy's not going away, I think that those people who are paying that mill levy are going to want to know, "What am I getting now for it? Why isn't it going away? What service level am I getting that anyone else in this, in this community's not getting because I'm paying more?" So, I mean, there's a lot of issues. It's hard to answer that question without seeing what their financial plan is. Now, Tony, you going to add?
If I could just add to that, so one thing to remember, most metro districts are created on the front end of development, where the developer is the, effectively, the voting party. They get to vote debt limits, whatever they want. Over time, as properties change hands and you have more ownerships, what happens is once that debt's retired, any new debt has to be voted on by that constituency. And so if they're willing to continue to pay at that time, that's their decision. But there's high probability they would look to vote to readjust their tax burden downwards in accordance with whatever cost may be incurred.
Which would be up to the residents or the members of the district.
Effectively, yeah. And if it's a residential project, yeah, it would be the residents, the owners of the property.
Is it reasonable to assume that when a plan is presented, the service plan, in that would be a governance model, and, and we would have a chance to approve or not, how individuals become part of a governing board, how they're elected, what that cycle looks like, how the metro district is governed?
Yeah, they, as long as they follow state law in terms of the, how the board is comprised, that's what would be the determining factor. So the state law would rule how the composition of the board and so forth--
All right, thanks.
--would be put together.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Having read this analysis, it's pretty clear what this ordinance does. And councilmember Waters has actually given a couple of examples of why a developer might do it or why a community might use a special district. But what I don't understand, and what I don't think I found in the analysis, is why is the city bringing this forward and what benefits does the city expect to gain from it?
So on that, this was part of the conversation the council had in terms of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, and it was brought forward by a motion from the council directing us to bring this item forward, allowing residential metro districts to be created. And that was the specific motion by the council, so that's why we're bringing that, this forward in this format.
And then one more piece of information is that when we talked, Harold and I talked about putting it on the agenda, that when we discussed it was to strike, to strike it. So rather than recreating a metro district and spend a year arguing over it, it was to strike it and then just use our discretion as each one came forward.
That actually was in the motion.
Yeah, so, I couldn't remember, but that is the, so again, we're not, the, this, there's no motion currently, but this ordinance doesn't allow anything, it just removes the prohibition. So, so you still have the floor?
I wasn't finished, yeah. Okay. So I, I recall a special session where we were educated on these districts. And I recall the motion. What I don't recall is the question I asked. I, you know, I still don't understand what, what benefits, what benefits that the city could expect to gain from this. Is this, is this a, a way of helping, of providing, does it, does it, does it make, is it some, does it in some way compensate developers for the inclusionary ordinance? Is it a way of, yeah, no, I, I understand that. I, what I, again, I want to know why it is a benefit to the city.
So recalling some of those conversations, I think a couple of things were brought forward in terms of questions the council asked. One was, if you have property that's very difficult to develop and you have a lot of public infrastructure requirements that needs to be associated with that property in terms of stormwater requirements and the like, that was one of the issues that was brought forward as a mechanism for needing metro districts to, to really take on some of that burden. I think the property that we referenced during that conversation was the one on North Hoover in '66, and we talked about some of the issues associated with that, particularly stormwater. Other examples that came forward, again, and I think this was a conversation that led to the motion by council, I could be wrong in my recollection, but it was also sort of the conversation on the development that was associated with the Veterans Community Project and the cost of the infrastructure specifically related to the roads and how they would need to recoup some of that cost. And that was part of the conversation with council in terms of those types of things. So I think generally, you know, when you say, "What's the benefit?", I think I go a little bit to what Jim said. In each individual plan, we're going to have to look at it to understand what the benefit is, but I think one of the things-- things that was discussed was, A, hard-to-develop properties, this is a source of revenue that they can utilize to carry that out. A second point that was brought up is that it could also be used to function essentially as an HOA, and so that provides a permanent revenue source to that. As we talked a little bit about it, and some of the issues that we were dealing with in terms of some of the private infrastructure, such as underdrain systems, that could be used to permanently fund the maintenance of those systems, which what we've seen is sometimes when the HOAs have to take that responsibility, they go defunct, and then we don't have the revenue sources available to make, or they don't, and sometimes they come to the city. So those were the various issues that I think were discussed in that conversation, as to why we need, why look at a metro district that led to the vote directing us to bring this, this format back, district, eliminating the residential component, or eliminating the provision that prevented metro districts and residential developments. You throwing something at me, Sean?
You're out of order.
So I don't know if that answered your question.
Left, the right, yeah, the assistant city manager, Sean Lewis, just shot a rubber band at the city manager during his comments. I mean, I expect better decorum from you.
Stop derailing my train of thought, Mr. Mayor, because I have a hard enough time writing it all by myself. Yes, city manager, that does in fact help me understand, especially the idea that, that, yeah, we've, we've basically developed all the low-hanging fruit, and now we've, we're coming to the harder-to-develop parcels in the city, and this is a way of managing the cost for those things. My concern about it, and I think I will support it, maybe with some caveats, but my concern about it is that it makes, it would, it might tend to make oases inside the city. I mean, we kind of, we kind of also, we have a few of those already, and I don't like them, you know, where, where the privilege just radiates out of certain neighborhoods. So, I feel like it could be used for that purpose, and yeah, maybe the initial developers and the initial purchasers might understand that, but maybe subsequent buyers might get, might get trapped into, into paying a higher property tax than they expected because of it. Do we have the ability to require disclosure of encumbrances like this on resale of property?
Councilmember Martin, I can let you know that, actually, on a purchase agreement now, or a purchase contract, there's actually a notice or a checkoff on that form that lets those buyers know whether or not it is within a district that has an additional tax burden on it. It doesn't stipulate the amount, but it does put them on notice.
So, they, they don't get a full disclosure of their property taxes at closing, or they do?
Well, yeah, they, they would get that as part of their settlement sheet, but at the time they put a contract on the property, there is actually a checkoff box, that if it is in, if it is within a special district, they have to check that off. They have to disclose it.
Presumably, then they can ask their title company for advance warning of how much it's gonna come to.
Yes, it's incumbent on how much information the title company gives to them in advance, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, A, on the front end, before the contract, there's the box, B, there's when you close and you get your estimated taxes on that sheet. Just what I do, is I've done this in different locations, I go to the appraiser's website and look at what taxes are on the property, when I've bought homes, just to get a sense of what that'll be. I mean, there's different options. Again, it's, there's a component where the buyer has to look for pieces of information.
Okay, yeah, that satisfies me, thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie, have you spoken on this topic yet? All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Three things. One, I'll be voting for this because council ultimately will approve or not approve a special district. It's up to us. Also, in a neighborhood, HOA dues are not tax deductible, and a lot of these amenities that would be in a subdivision would go into the HOA dues. But if it's in a special district where they're paying taxes, then that's deductible on their income taxes. It also helps keep the cost of the house itself at a more reasonable level, because the developer doesn't have to roll in a lot of costs into that house, they can do it through the special district. It just makes sense, especially when we've added a twelve percent fee on top of the forty to forty-five thousand dollars per house we're already charging them to build a house. So, this is just a small little thing we can give them, an order, a tool that they can use to recoup some of, some of, not recoup, but offset some of those costs. So I would be in support of this, and would make that motion unless someone else wants to. I move that we pass ordinance twenty nineteen thirteen.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Finley, and seconded by Dr. Waters. I just have, have said what I think, and then there's still people in the queue. But first time around, just a quick question. Those of you who've been to my neighborhood, it's a nicer neighborhood, right? My question is, would you mind if the homes where I live and my neighbors lived had a metro district, and we had to pay a higher tax? Anyone care if that was the case? I don't think so, right? So, so, I mean, maybe, maybe I'm assuming, but I think that people who are gonna develop over a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, they're the ones who are subject to the inclusionary zoning tax. Meaning, if you're going to build something and sell it for eighty percent AMI, sixty percent AMI, a hundred percent AMI, and then a hundred and ten and a hundred and twenty, get little discounts. So the people who would be using metro districts would predominantly, almost one hundred percent be, we could even make a policy that says that if you're building at a hundred and twenty percent or below, you can't have a metro district. I mean, naturally. And so, I'm seeing looks. So my, my, my point is that if you're going to build larger homes in your, in our community, you have to pay a fee in lieu. And so, if you're going to be, I mean, someone's going to be paying for this, whether it's the developer, or the people moving into our town. So some of the things our city gets is, number one, people moving into our town would have to pay their own way. That's something that we hear and we see on council time and time again. When you move in, you're expected to pay your own way. Two, people moving in, we are asking them to pay something that no one else in town currently has. If you have a home, or you purchase an existing home, you are not paying a subsidy, at least in theory, for affordable housing. You are, if you are buying, or buying a recently built home, or a newly built home in a specific, one of those small areas of town that we haven't built in yet, again, it's likely not to impact one hundred percent, or one hundred percent of AMI or less homes being built. And last but not least, this is all disclosed in the record with the city clerk. Even if it is a check-the-box, but even if it wasn't, it's all part of the public record that your real estate agent would, would hopefully tell you. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. Now let's run through the list again. Mayor Potem?
Okay, I would like, right now, most of us, we all voted for the special, well, the scientific and arts fund that, for the metro Denver area, and we're all paying that. So there's nothing that prevents metro districts, or the library, for instance. We're not talking about that. That already exists. We can set up anything we want to. We can also fund it with a bond, we can fund it with a public vote tax, we can fund it any number of ways. These are all shared public things for the public good, for the common good. When we set it up for special districts, then the only people who can use these amenities are the people from that special district. And this is precisely what Councilwoman Martin said, it just exacerbates some of the distance between people who have lots and lots of money and people who don't. As far as it being a tax write-off, well, most people in this city aren't able to, they can't afford, they don't have anything they can write off, including that. So, it only benefits people who have enough, who make enough money to actually be able to use some, you know, tax write-offs with their taxes. They're paying taxes, but they're not able to file tax write-offs. So it doesn't, I really, I would question the benefit for this, to anybody but the developer. And as Mr. Chacon said, the developer is the one who creates this for themselves. They're the only ones who voted on it, they're the ones who set up, who are the original board. Eventually, it may come to be other people, but basically, this is a mechanism to stretch out, lower the cost for developers, and increase their profit at the expense of the people living in the development. So, I mean, there are people who are paying more in their special fees, special residential districts, and their HOA fees than they're paying on their mortgage. That does not give us more affordable housing. That makes housing less affordable in the long run. It makes, may make some homes slightly cheaper in the short term, although I question that, because I don't think, I don't see developers dropping their, the amount they're charging. So I can't support this at all. We already have a way to finance things like libraries that we share, and I would like to keep it the way it is right now.
Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, I don't think you've said anything on this. You did? All right, then let's keep going through. Dr. Waters? Sorry.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley.
Now it's the queue.
To the question of how did this get here, I moved, and we, I think it was, I don't know if it was a unanimous vote, to put this, to bring this back. The reason I moved it, and I, and I probably did it on the same night, I can't remember the night, that we approved our inclusionary housing ordinance, inclusionary housing ordinance, because, as far as I'm concerned, I won't speak for anybody but me, I gave my word, when we passed that vote, that that was a package, not just an ordinance. And in the package, in addition to the ordinance, was the repeal, or at least the consideration, I know, of this, of the repeal of this ordinance to allow for metro districts. I gave my word on that. We gave our word, I gave my word, and I think the city did, that we were gonna create some options when people paid their fees. We're in the process of a water study. We gave our word, that that water study, when it's finished, will come back and will be reflected and impact fees. As a matter of principle, as far as I'm concerned, to back up on this for me, is backing up on the word I gave at the time we passed that housing ordinance. So I'm voting yes, for no other reason, as a matter of principle. And we can fix whatever we need to going down the, down the road. But I just wanna make it clear, that for me, this is not technical issue, this is a principle issue, because of what we said when we passed another package, or ordinance as part of a package.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and I definitely have listened, and I will say, I just wanna clarify my position to the extent that I'm not anti-metro district. My real qualm with the issue comes with how the state statutes are written surrounding metro districts, and the amount of power that is granted to the governing board of a metro district. And I feel like too often, at times, the city comes up against state preemption rules that don't fit our municipality, and in the goals of our community. And I feel that this could become an issue with metro districts as they're written in the state statutes. And that's my major issue with it. Not that I'm anti-metro district, I do see benefits to them, but that's where my stance comes from, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Mayor?
Oh, sorry, Mr. May?
If I could respond, and this was Councilmember Rodriguez's question about enforcement. So I was looking at the statute. The city can bring an action, a court action, to enjoin a material departure from the service plan. It's either that or the court that granted the service plan. There is a forty-five day limitation, that the action must be brought within forty-five days of the district action. And examples given in the statute are construction of a facility, issuance of bonds, levying of taxes, fees, charges. So, you know, major actions of the special district, the special district has to give the governing body of the municipality notice of those actions, and then we would have forty-five days to bring an action to enjoin if we thought it was departing from the service plan. For Councilmember Waters, I was actually looking through my notes, this motion to strike the residential prohibition was November thirteenth, and that was first reading of the inclusionary housing as part of a number of motions. And it was five-two with Peck and Christensen dissenting.
Councilmember Beck?
Thanks, Eugene, for the clarification.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Eugene. I see this two ways. I am not against metro districts, especially if it's in commercial. But my biggest, my biggest concern is that a developer can, as Councilman Waters said, upfront, before they develop, before they file a plat, they can create a special district to push the cost of remediation of their property, whatever it is they're asking the special district for, to push that cost off onto the residents for twenty years or whatever, in order to get their development in. I don't have any problem, and I, and I don't think that you can divide these two things, if, if a development is in, and the residents themselves, through the HOA, create a special district, because they decide they wanna put in a, a community pool, or a community clubhouse, or, or a library, a branch library in their development. But to have the developer upfront, want a special district on the backs of the residents' taxes, just so that they can make their land developable, I have a problem with that. So I, I can't support this because of that. If those two things could be extricated or divided, that would be a totally different thing for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Yeah?
So obviously, council's gonna need to vote on this. One of the things I wanted to point out is that if council moves this forward for a second reading, you all can ask us questions if you want more detail, and we could try to have Carolyn White here at the next meeting, if council desires, if they wanna move that forward. That is just an option that we haven't thrown out.
And these are titans debating up here. Don't step in the middle of this. You're gonna get hurt, Harold. Just sit there, okay? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
I was just kidding.
Yeah, the mayor did it.
No, I didn't.
So, I actually have a different perspective from Councilmember Peck's. I actually think to develop difficult land, like the swamp up at north, you know, is a good use of this mechanism, because we would get land developed that maybe can't be developed profitably any other way, and we need that. My concern about it, and maybe the answer is for the council to be wary of proposals like this, is that it devalues the public good by creating private oases that I don't think should exist in, in a modern city in a democracy, honestly. I would like all the libraries in the city to be open to everybody. I'd like all the swimming pools to be open to everybody, and the parks. And so, it, to answer your question, Mayor Bagley, yes. I would find it abhorrent if your neighborhood put in a bunch of private amenities using a metro district, because I think it's elitist and appalling. So there. So, I guess I would like to get it on the record, as, I hope that in a modern urban setting... So, I guess I would like to get it on the record, as I hope that in a modern urban setting, this mechanism will not be used for that purpose. To make it, to use it to develop land that is unreasonably expensive to develop, I can get behind that. And I guess all it really takes is that this council and subsequent councils should be vigilant in using mechanisms like this one, and not using mechanisms like this one, to break the character of a city that whatever else you say about it has a good character now, and a good sense of public community. So I'm going to reluctantly vote to pass it on to second reading, but I'll be trying to think hard about ways that it could be, about protections that maybe could be added to it.
No one else is in the queue. Just in response, I don't believe my neighbors are elitist, for the record. I don't believe I'm elitist, for the record. And my point was, I don't think metro districts, this is the first time it just dawned on me as you were speaking, we're not talking about metro districts for the use of building, you know, a gold-plated, you know, amphitheater in the middle of the rich people's neighborhood that nobody can use. What we're talking about is, no, what we're talking about is 120% AMI and above will be paying the 12% cash-in lieu. And if someone, if a developer comes forward and they want to build high-end homes in Longmont, they are going to be ponying up 12%. And there seems to be, I believe, a misconception that there's this huge difference between a developer who's rich and greedy, and then the people who are coming in to buy the homes. My point was, do you think I need help buying my home, which is fairly nice? So my point is, if a developer's going to build a very nice neighborhood, tax them, and then take their 12% and buy affordable homes. So you are taxing them, you are taxing, the metro district is taxing the people who will be moving into Longmont and buying those homes. And so if you're built, if you're buying a home, if you're at 100% AMI and less, right, chances are, you're not going to be moving into a metro district, because those aren't the neighborhoods that are going to be needing the help to buy affordable housing, or to pay 12% cash-in lieu. The homes that are going to be hit with this tax for their neighborhood are the very people that this council, and I think a lot of people in this community are arguing, they need to pay their own way. So I don't, and if somebody did come forward and say, "We'd like to use a metro district to, you know, build a private library, so the Bagley boys may go and bask in the literature of Aristotle, and Plato, and Socrates, and they shall gain in wisdom and stature." That's, we can always say, "No, that's not fair. Those little brats, they're privileged, and they shouldn't, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be given that opportunity." So the metro district is just, it's basically a specific tax on a certain area, and we do that with HOAs all the time. Legally and process-wise, the only way you can start is the developer owns the land, and if they're gonna start an HOA, I mean, when you buy a new home, what happens is, is homes are built, you know, the, right, at first, it's the, get this on camera, I guess it would be this way if it was a camera. So at one point, the developer owns all the land, so has 100% of the vote. The only way a metro district or an HOA association can get started is if the person who owns the land develops it, and then starts transferring voting rights until you hit a point, let's just say it's 50%, until all of a sudden, the developer says, "I'm turning it over to the homeowners. The HOA can now take it over, and I'm not gonna have anything to do with it." So that tax in the very beginning is just like an HOA, except that it will only, or we can even make, again, we can pass the policy, we can do it one by one, but it will only be those neighborhoods that are going to be paying the 12%, so to speak. And I think that if it would help the developer, and if it's just a bunch of rich elitists who will be predominantly paying this, I mean, that is how the inclusionary zoning ordinance was structured, so that people who can afford it will pay it, and people who are new to Longmont will pay it. So two criteria, you have to be over 100% AMI, or truly to escape over 120% AMI, you have to be, and you have to be building new development, or buying a new home in Longmont. So newcomers get hit who are wealthy. I thought that was kinda like the idea here. Then again, maybe I'm wrong. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I do want to say that the first time you mentioned your neighborhood, it did sound like you were planning on building a lot of amenities for elitists.
Hey, I believe you built a bike park there.
It wasn't a very gold-plated bike park, I have to say. And I only did it because you were distancing yourself from a bunch of little kids. So you have to admit that. Okay, so, yeah, I agree. I don't like the idea of a lot of private amenities in the city, but a vigilant city council can make sure that it won't approve plans that would have to be, that are being done for that purpose. So, you know, I do like amenities to be public, that's all.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Nobody else is in the queue. Let's vote. Oh, wait, hold on one second. Hold on. Mayor Protam?
I'd like something clarified. When people are paying these special fees for these separate government entities that are state-regulated, supposedly, they, does the money still go to the school system?
I'm gonna ask for Jim to come in, so, just in case I miss it, but the metro district is an additional tax on top of the normal taxes that come in, so you still pay your school district and all the other taxes. This is just an additional piece.
All right, now let's vote. All right, split vote. It's close, 4-4, 3 against, 4 was Councilmember Finley, myself, Councilmember Martin, and Councilmember Waters. Against was Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Peck, and Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protam Christensen. All right, let's go on to Resolution 2019-09, a resolution to Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the University of Colorado Boulder for student-led design assistance for pedestrian spaces in and connecting to downtown Longmont. Who, Councilmember Peck?
Actually, I just want to make a comment on this, I think it's a great idea. But while the students are doing this, doing connectivity to downtown, connectivity to our greenway, I would suggest that they work with our transportation department, so that the east side, they're working on an alleys-to-trails, I'm gonna call it, because there's not enough land there to actually make trails. It's so built, so close, and so dense. So if we can use the alleys as bike trails, walking trails, and I think the transportation department's already working on that, so if we can align those, that would be great. And having said that, I move...
What number was it?
2019-09?
Yep. Still moved.
That was moved by Councilmember Peck and co-seconded by Councilmember Martin and Mayor Protam. That passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to Resolution 2019-13, item 9K, I'm sorry, 8K. A resolution to Longmont City Council approving a voluntary alternative agreement for the Brickstone Development as satisfaction of the city's inclusionary housing requirements. And who pulled that?
Staff.
Staff pulled that.
So while Kathy's getting ready, one of the things when we passed the inclusionary housing ordinance, this was one of the items that council wanted us to present to you all, because of the format of our agenda and the resolution, it was put on consent. Hopefully, when we move to the new system, we can get this, that'll go on to general business in the future. But you all did direct us to give a presentation on these types of items as they come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kathy Fedler, Housing and Community Investment Manager. And tonight, the Brickstone Apartments is here to ask for approval of a voluntary alternative agreement to provide rental housing, affordable rental housing, under the Inclusionary Housing Program. And the developer is here, if you do have questions of him directly. So the Brickstone Apartments is doing 280 total rental homes. They started out that they needed to provide affordable homes to meet their land use requirements, and then because they did not have their final approval prior to the effective date of the ordinance, they also fell under the Inclusionary Housing Agreement. Per the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, developments of units for rental may satisfy the requirements using any of the options except onsite or offsite provisions, but instead have to use the alternative agreement of a voluntary agreement in order to stay compliant with state codes. So the Brickstone Apartments is located south of Kim Pratt Boulevard, and west of East Third Avenue, and north of Great Western Drive. Again, like I said, 280 total units will be constructed. Per the requirements of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, we first apply to rental properties the density provision, so they are developing 13.52 acres, and if we multiply that times 20 units, dwelling units per acre, which is the average cap that was included in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, that gives us 270.4 units that the ordinance would be applicable to, and exempts 9.6 units. And then applying the 12% requirement to the 270.4 units gives us 32.4 affordable homes that would be required. The developer can choose to round this up to 33 homes, or they could provide 32 homes and pay an estimated about $7,600 in the fee in lieu for the fraction unit. The developer does wish to provide 33 homes, affordable at or below 60% of the area meeting income, which is at the limit of our Affordable Housing Ordinance. I won't go through this since I just did. The homes, affordable homes would be provided as 13 one-bedroom, 17 two-bedroom, and three three-bedroom units. The units would float, so that as an affordable unit is vacated, the next available unit would be affordable, that would meet the bedroom requirements, so that you don't have to wait for somebody to rent the existing one, so it should move things along more quickly and keep the units full. There would be annual reporting that would be required to show that they are meeting all the requirements, and the property would be restricted to provide 33 affordable homes. This does address Council Work Plan Goal B 1.1, and Performance Goals 1, 2, and 4, as outlined here. And I'd be happy to take any questions, or if you have questions of the developer as well.
Nobody's in the queue. What I, my only question is, this is a development where there's no adjacent properties currently, correct?
Correct.
So the odds of NIMBYs coming forward, if we were to, I mean, there's no residential properties next door.
There's Mill Village across Third Avenue, Mill Village neighborhood's across Third Avenue, but that's the closest.
Okay. They're concerned? Okay, all right, so, all right. That's what I, that's really what I was asking. What are the neighbors gonna think? And so basically, what we're doing is, we're allowing maximum density plus an additional 9.6 units, in return for 33 affordable housing units. So dense plus affordable housing neighbors, yeah. That's why I asked. I figured they'd be concerned. Mayor Protam?
Yeah, this neighborhood is very concerned. They bought houses, and they were promised a village, and now they're surrounded by apartment buildings. And they were told, there is one thing that this brings up. I'm gonna vote for this, because I think it's getting us where we need to go, and it's already way down the road, so. But when they appeared before, when the concerned people from that neighborhood appeared before planning and zoning, they were told there was no appeal, and that was council's incentive, that all the, all affordable housing would go through without any appeal. I don't think that was ever our intention. And since everything is now affordable, we need to think about that incentive, because we can't have developers able to appeal, which I think is fair, without citizens having the right to appeal. That is not fair. So we need to think about that, what that expedited review means. It doesn't mean no appeal by citizens.
All right, nobody else is in the queue. Do we have a motion? Or not? We can move on to the next.
I'll move.
The, all right, keep going. Are you done?
Mm-hmm.
Is it all done? Okay, so, yeah, that's what I mean, is there a motion? We are on, I'll help you out, Resolution 2019-13. Dr. Waters?
I'll move Resolution 2019-13.
All right, we've had a motion by Dr. Waters, and it was seconded by Councilmember Peck. Nobody else is in the queue. Let us vote. That passes unanimously. And I have a feeling we're not done with that issue. All right, let's move on to the last of the consent agenda items. 8M, approve Housing and Human Services Advisory Board recommendations on funding for two projects from the Affordable Housing Fund. I would've pulled it, but I did not. Who did? Okay, Councilmember Waters?
I have two questions, probably Kathy, and I've asked you probably both of these, so I should remember the answers. The one is easy, the second is not, not quite as easy. Just to remind me, who's on the Affordable Housing Technical Review Group? Is that, are those paid consultants?
No.
Those are volunteers.
They're citizens from Longmont, or residents of Longmont.
What's the kind of backgrounds do they bring?
So there are lenders, there, and this is required as part of being appointed to the body, so the lending institutions, real estate, low and moderate income representatives, senior housing advisory board member, and developers.
Okay, that's helpful. I appreciate that, that's a, you know, just knowing that background. So I don't know how far to go with my second question, but it is, I asked you this in a telephone conversation. My concern here is on not, on both of these, it's on one of these, and it's just the background noise or input that we have a tendency to get from the community. It's on the Thistle Housing Community financing. I want to do, I want to do what we need to do to provide quality, affordable housing to everybody who qualifies. But I'm, but I've had some input from members of the community about a former financing plan or project in which Thistle was involved, that fell apart and left maybe the city and a bank holding a bag.
Million bucks.
Serious debt. Could you provide some background on that, and why we shouldn't? I realize this has a unanimous recommendation from the committee, your advisory committee, so I get that, and I respect that. But just help me, I don't know how much of the conversation occurred there, but so that I feel like I've done my due diligence on this based on what I've heard from others, why we shouldn't be concerned about a partner in this that, if accurate, left folks holding a bag on an earlier project.
So what you are referencing is the Lou Vista development, I believe, that Thistle was involved in, which is a for-sale housing product in South Longmont. And we, the city had participated in and loaned Thistle $1.3 million from the Affordable Housing Fund to help with installing the utilities. That's one of the properties that is hard to develop. There was some significant infrastructure that was required in order to develop that property. We participated in that with a loan, $1.3 million loan, as well as a little bit of CDBG funding. That project did go into foreclosure, it hit during the recession, so it was... So it was subject to a lot of the hardships that a lot of the private sector development went through as well. The difference is, the private sector had not borrowed funds from the city, but many developments went under in that case as well. It never impacted their rental properties at all. They didn't have any kind of financial issues from their rental properties. So I, that is part of the reason why the TRG and the Housing Advisory Board, I think, felt comfortable going ahead with this recommendation for the scattered site rental. The other thing that we did at that time is that we did put into place a policy. It was added in on October 10th of 2013 that applicants for funding can't have any delinquent debt owed to the city for utilities, building permits, fees, loans, et cetera. Loans must be current and not in default. An agency is not in default if it has a workout agreement with the city. And they're also prohibited from seeking funding for a period of five days, five years from the day of the default. So that was put in place partially because of that.
Can you repeat that, what you just said? This was put in place? I mean, the one, what you said right before.
This policy.
What was the policy again?
It's called the Delinquent City Accounts Policy. So it requires that applicants be current on all their debts, or if they did go into foreclosure, that they are banned from applying for funding for five years from the date of the default resolution. So that, they, we are past the five-year default. And I would say also, while Thistle defaulted to the bank, the city chose to keep the requirement for affordable housing on the Blue Vista development so that, in effect, we are still getting those affordable units through the current developer. So we are still getting a significant amount of affordable units by the city, keeping the, when all the other inclusionary housing requirements were repealed, keeping that affordable housing requirement on the Blue Vista development.
So is Thistle, Thistle is now eligible, they qualify?
Correct.
Because the five years have extended or elapsed? Is that why?
Correct, correct.
So they didn't, there wasn't a workout plan, there wasn't a repayment. It was simply the five years.
Correct.
So here's a related question. Thistle submitted a proposal to LHA for LHA to participate, as I recall, with tax credits as part of this package. And LHA, they were on a short timeline, and LHA passed, right? I think you and I were both at that meeting and chose not to act on that proposal, that request.
At that time.
At that time. Well, and as I recall, they needed an answer within days to put this package together. So they don't have the participation of LHA at this point. Is this viable without LHA involved in the mix? Do you know that? And if we say, if we approve this tonight, does this end it? Or are there other elements or other pieces that have to come together to move this forward? And so it's dependent on those, no matter what we do tonight?
So I am going to try and answer that, but Mary can come down. Mary Duval from Thistle can come down if I answer incorrectly. What they were requesting from the housing authority was participation as a partner in order to take the properties, make them tax exempt. So that would save a certain amount of money as part of this overall financing package. They will be going into CHAFA to still apply without that. If they get it next month or the month after, that will be all to the benefit. If they don't get it at all, they'll probably have to look at some restructuring, but I don't think it will stop the CHAFA application. She's saying I am correct. So it's just another glitch that they'll have to, or little gap that they'll have to figure out how to fund as part of that overall financing package.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Christiansen?
So I'm on Housing and Human Services as the liaison. And this was first presented, oh, I don't know where it was first presented. So the first one of these, Thistle has a very good record. And if they hadn't started what is now Blue Vista, it wouldn't probably have started. So we were lucky to get a really excellent developer to take that over and continue. He's done a terrific job, and that's an excellent example of what you can have with mixed-income development. But three of these, the, there are two things in this request. And one of them is the Mobile Home Park Co-op, which was started by those residents to protect them, you know, so that they actually have some agency over their lives. And I am very supportive of that. And the other one is to repair three complexes that Thistle has, Thistle built. Maybe they didn't build them, but they've taken, yeah.
They purchased all of them.
They were built originally, one of them in 1968, one of them in 1973. So, you know, they, they need, they have done all the maintenance over the years. And this is just basically kind of routine maintenance, but it's large when you're talking about homes that old. So these provide housing for, I don't know how many exactly, Longmont citizens.
132 households. 132 low and moderate income households.
Yeah. So I'm very supportive of that getting repaired and maintaining that as part of our affordable housing is to maintain, not just to build new stuff, because we won't get that much, but to maintain what we have and keep it in good shape for people.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is a question about Longmont Mobile Home Park. As I understand, they're, we're helping them buy their land. And as a consequence of that, their lot payments are going to go to 750 a month.
700. Down from 750.
If we give our funding, they'll go to 700, otherwise 755.
Okay, yeah, okay, I've got that. And that's my mistake because I misread it as they were going up to 750. And knowing the economics of living in a trailer park, 750 is a vast rent payment for a lot. And so, and it looks like, is the 700 going to be a cap now? Or I don't quite understand whether this 1% a month is applying to a baseline of 700 or whether it was what was expected of, if it was allowed to go up to 750. What's going to happen to these folks? Because, because, you know, people, other people I know that are living in other trailer parks are struggling with paying their $600 lot rent and still eating. So what are we doing for them?
Right, so the $300,000 that we would lend into the deal helps, like I said, bring it from their 755, I think it is, down to 700 a month per, per mobile home. It is, they're anticipating that it may go, it may change as much as 1% a month. They, within five years, they have to be at market. So that means they aren't going to be able to raise it too much to keep a market because they are going above market right now. And let's not forget that they set the budget and they approved it, the entire membership of the, of the co-op. So it wasn't just the board, it was all members that voted to do that and to raise their lot rents to 700. And they'll all have to, to vote for any increases. They may be able to lower them once they get in and see what their budget is and what maintenance needs to be done and get some of that initial stuff done over the initial year. Or it may have to go up a little bit. We just don't know at this point in time.
Okay, well, it's to be hoped that they'll get it under control because clearly, when it's an outside commercial landlord, it's not under control.
Correct.
So certainly, in concept, this is a very good thing. My concern is, was this done unanimously or was it by majority vote? Because I am concerned that there may be some people who can't pay 700 a month and what's going to happen with them.
I'm Mary Duval from Thistle. I'm the CEO there. And with me tonight is Mike King. He is president of the LMP Co-op. So thank you for considering this. I just, I want to be very clear and make sure that there are no misconceptions or misunderstanding about the financing. So the, the co-op has formed. There were 24 members of the co-op at the last membership meeting out of 36 homes that are eligible to be members of the co-op. And they voted themselves an increase of up to $750 a month for rent. Most people right now pay about $625 a month, plus water, and that includes pet fees and other fees that the landlord charges them. The residents all went through the pro formas. The board had worked with the community and the residents to develop these pro formas with the lenders to factor out the operating costs and what it would take to carry the cost of that debt. And again, the members themselves voted to raise their rent up to $755 if needed. We're working to complete our financing package. We'd like to target the rent at $700 a month. And the $300,000 that's been requested from the city of Longmont will help attain that. There's another piece of the financing that's still a little bit unsettled, and we're working through that for the next, over the next two weeks before closing. So that's, that's the work we have in front of us. But without the funding from the city of Longmont, it will, the, the closing and the lower rent will not be attainable. So it is, it does make a critical difference in the lives of the people there. To your point, Councilmember Martin, the majority of the residents here are approximately at 50% AMI. You heard five or six people come and speak tonight, asking for your help. I would say that the predominant community profile there is of a working-class family. So there, there are several elderly residents who've lived there, I mean, 40, 30 years. But there are many, many working people there who choose to live in an affordable home in a community that they enjoy. So I just, I want to be, particularly after the Blue Vista conversation, I want to be really clear and make sure that we can be as factual as possible with you all. And this is a new program to Colorado. We closed a park in Canyon City in December. Those residents of two parks came together and formed a co-op. And with this national lender and a national network, have been able to decide how they want to run their park, what they want to spend their money on, and the rent levels that they're comfortable paying. So I'm happy to answer any more questions or Mike can fill you in anymore about the processes.
Yeah, just quickly, I want to ask Kathy a question. And then I do welcome your comments. Just want to say, I don't oppose this, but I, talking about outliers and my concern for the less wealthy among, among the ownership group, does their ownership status make them less eligible for, you know, short-term rental assistance or something if, if somebody gets in trouble? Because, you know, their rent is going up by a large percentage in the short term. So would they, would they still be able to get city services to help them stay current?
Yes, because that's all just income-based.
Okay, great. That was my biggest concern. Go ahead.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize for jumping in.
One second, but did you have a question to her? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. One of the things I did want to mention, everybody is aware that we are making quite the jump to the 700 mark. However, I've lived in the park since I moved back to Colorado. I grew up actually right off of 66 in Maine there, right off behind the church, the community there. I think it was Columbine Street. I can't remember the numbers, it's been a long time. And I was also a part of the last football championship to Longmont, if I remember correctly.
Who?
Yeah, back when Gordon Kramer was still here with us. Anyway, one of the big things was the, the jump up to the 700. I moved back five years ago. I haven't seen a single year in which we don't jump 25 to 50 dollars. So we would be at that point in the next coming years. We voted for that number because that was kind of the cusp of what everybody thought, you know, the worst-case scenario, what we could afford. Another thing about the park is there's not a lot of common area. So upkeep on the park basically comes down to making sure the water's flowing and, you know, everything, the electricity, things like that. So, you know, it's not like we have to take care of a clubhouse or, you know, things of that nature. It's really just trees and things like that. So that's just something I wanted to add, that, you know, we have seen the lot rent go up every year. And we knew we'd be at this number in several years. And this is what we see as our best-case scenario for stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'm sure that some of my fellow council members, if not most of you, have read multiple articles that have been coming out recently where there are large financial groups that are taking over numbers of parks and jacking up the, the lot fees or lot rents. And I think it's, it just behooves us and shows us our commit, shows our commitment to the affordable housing and attainable housing initiatives by supporting an ownership concept that pulls it within the residence of the actual park. And so I'm definitely in support of that. And to speak to the second funding proposal, I absolutely agree with Mayor Protem that it's vitally important that we maintain the units that we have, as well as I noted here, that five units at the Parkville Apartments will be converted into accessible units, which are also subset of the market that we're in great need of as well. So I'll be supporting both fundings.
The queue's empty. I've got a couple of questions. So we're going from where basically the co-op is purchasing the Mobile Home Park, so the current tenants become homeowners, right? And then the city will be not gifting, but loaning them 300,000, which is interest-free for 10 years. So the city might be giving them really, really, really good interest, a really, really good interest rate, but theoretically, we're not giving them the money, we're just giving them the interest or foregoing the interest.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So I don't have a problem if that's the case. Because if anybody says, well, why in the world would the city just give this Mobile Home Park? That's what we do. We develop low-income homes through the city's Affordable Housing Fund. And I think that that distinction is key, right? We're not giving people anything. We're loaning them the money and they're going to pay them, pay us back. So that's important. The second question is, what relationship is there in the Mobile Home Park between Thistle and the co-op? Simply because, as the chair, this appears to be two different issues. And I was going to say, we should probably have two different votes because Robert's Rule says we shouldn't be voting on two votes at one time. And so then you guys stood up and you're like, hi, I'm Thistle, and this is the co-op, and we're buddies. So what is, is there a relationship here?
So Thistle is a Rock certified trainer.
I thought you were going to say a rock star.
No. Rock is the resident-owned community, they say USA. So Rock USA is actually the one that's lending them the bulk of the money to purchase.
So, okay, so.
So Thistle became a Rock certified training, trainer, facilitator. Technical assistant, sorry. So they provide support along the way. So they help set up the, the deal, the financing. They work with the board to get that established. They help train them around that. They will provide ongoing technical assistance through the entire term of the loan, the 10 years.
So how much are they, how much are they loaning? How much is Thistle loaning the co-op?
Nothing.
Nothing? Or just?
We don't have a financial interest in it. We are part of a network called Rock USA. Rock USA provides both ongoing community development training, so training people how to be good neighbors, how to have a board, how to live in a democratic society. And also has a CDFI, a Certified Financial Development Institute. So like a bank, but regulated.
Thank you, I had no idea what that acronym was.
Regulated a little bit differently. They, they are chartered only to lend money to mobile home cooperatives. So they go, they have 224 co-ops around the country that they have financed and helped to form, all of which, many of which are coming through that 10-year period and looking at some kind of refinancing. And that was a good question from the advisory board, that, you know, is this sustainable after 10 years? And it has proven to be.
Okay.
So our relationship, we have a contract with, with the co-op, and we'll provide ongoing monthly. ongoing monthly meeting help, helping the board live to their bylaws and their Articles of Incorporation and their community rules.
Can I ask what that fee is?
I think it's some percentage of the loan amount, so it looks like it'll be about nine hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
So it'll cover one quarter of a staff person.
Okay. All right. And then, so you answered my questions on the co-op, so, but I do have some concerns about Thistle. I've never met you, I, I don't know Thistle that well, I just know back in two thousand and eleven, when I first was elected, the Thistle down there on South Maine was, people wanted your, not your head, but Thistle's head. "Oh my gosh." They were, you know, anyway, I know that some of the reasons that were stated was, well, there was a recession that hit. I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, but all the economic indicators are that we are on the cusp of that happening again, so I'm sitting here asking myself...
I'll knock on wood for you.
No, but it will. I mean, the, 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 the economy's cyclical, and the economic indicators are that that recession is coming. And so, we're literally having the same conversation with the, in the same economic pool, or stew, so to speak, with the same organization that defaulted on a one-point-three-million-dollar obligation. So, that, that's number one. That was my thought when I, when I heard the staff talking. And even though it was the recession, you know, that, there were a lot of nonprofits and for-profits and housing folks that didn't go under because they had a good financial house and it was in order. And so my, and I understand, everybody gets a second chance, and I agree that you provide, Thistle provides affordable housing, and we don't want to make, we don't want our stock to decrease, we want it to increase, but are we gifting them the six hundred, or is it a loan? It's a loan, correct? And then what's the interest rate? Zero again?
Sorry. No, it's one percent for the first eighteen years, and they will make interest payments from years one through eighteen. They will start some principal payments as well in year sixteen from net cash flow, and then in year nineteen, it will convert to a zero percent interest with repayment of all accumulated principal and interest paid over the next twelve years. So it's a total thirty-year term.
Okay. Because the, all right, so a thirty-year, one percent slash zero percent interest, six hundred thousand over thirty years seems, given the history of Thistle, the one-point-three million that they didn't repay, I mean, I guess I'm just, I, I, I'm hesitant to vote for it. Doesn't mean it won't pass, doesn't even mean that I won't vote for it, it's just that I have angst. Whereas I'm hearing the co-op, "Hey, look, twenty-four of thirty-six, you know, we're working our butts off, life's hard, whatever, we're willing to pay you back in ten years, help us." I just, there, there's a difference here for me. And so I've, I don't know exactly what I'm thinking, but I'm just, spider senses going off on the Thistle aspect of this, and I don't know why, I'm just, anyway, hopefully someone will help me out. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. A comment and a question. One is, I live by the Blue Vista neighborhood, and it turned into a great neighborhood. So, I, I don't know whether that was a matter of design, or whether it was a matter of who came to the rescue, or what, but we have...
So everything there's now is what Thistle built.
Yeah. And so, it turned into a great neighborhood.
For one-point-three million.
Yeah, okay. So, the question is about the Thistle, what did you call it, a scattered development?
Scattered site.
Scattered site, right, which means that there's three properties involved, and they're in different places.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, although not that far apart.
Correct.
And that was why I asked for the map. So what's the alternative? I, I mean, I think these, these properties are in need of repair, they are occupied, presumably occupied by people of limited means. So what happens if the, this deal doesn't go through? What happens to the people who live there?
So, Mary again can jump in if I don't answer this correctly, but what we discussed at the Housing Advisory Board and the Technical Review Group is if the city doesn't participate, they don't have our six hundred thousand, or they have some amount less than that, one, it's, it will impact what they can request and receive from CHAFPA, because they're going to be refinancing those three properties as well as doing rehab, so it's really a thirty-eight-million-dollar total deal, of which we're participating with six hundred thousand.
How much? Three-point-eight?
Thirty-eight million, thirty-eight-point-five million. I probably should have gone through my presentation, might have answered a lot of your questions. So, so they would have to restructure. One, they need local participation, CHAFPA looks for that in order to, consideration for funding. The state Division of Housing also looks for local participation in order for them to participate, so probably about one-point-two million at least is hanging on our participation. And if they don't get that and things have to change, they'll have to go ahead and refinance, but they'll probably have to cut a lot of the rehab, so that the units won't be improved, and they'll have to cut that down to the bare minimum, which would probably be, I think they said, really just looking at fi, the fire suppression work. So I don't know, Mary, do you want to...
I would say that's accurate.
So, it would be a really scaled-down...
Right, so...
Non-rehab, really.
So the city is really taking a very small percentage of this, and, and it's essentially a well-funded rehab project. So it's, it, it seems to me that, that that minimizes the city's risk, because a big project with a lot of money and it has a lot of momentum.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if they don't get funded from CHAFPA, so they will go in February first with their application. If CHAFPA doesn't fund it, we'll come back and we'll relook at the entire deal, because obviously it'd have to be restructured, so...
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Waters?
Yeah, the, you added a bit of information. I mean, I knew that there would be a default, I didn't know that, some of the timing and the, and total amounts. Did your technical, does your technical review group review financials? What's different in finance, the Thistle financials today than in two thousand and eleven, or two thousand and thirteen, or whenever that was? And, and you would conclude that we'd have more confidence if there was a downturn in the economy, that this, this loan would still be serviced, even with a changed economic condition because of their financials. So what, can you, off the top of your head, or from the technical advisory group, provide any understanding? Because we didn't get their financials. We got the recommendations, but it does leave a, it's kind of a black box, not knowing what those financials look like today compared to what they looked like in two thousand and eleven, how leveraged they are, how this deal gets structured, and, and what the obligations are to all the participants in, in helping to build the financing package.
So the technical review group did look at that. To speak to specifics, I can't off the top of my head, they're in, not as leveraged as they were back then, obviously. Their audits are all clean and have no issues. Part of the, the difference, and I don't, I went into it a little bit in, in the council communication, there was a difference of what the TRG recommended as loan terms versus what staff ended up recommending to the Housing Advisory Board, and that's because we did look at the pro forma for the, the project and didn't see how they could make the payment that the TRG had recommended. So that's why, that's a little bit, was structured differently. So we did look at that and what they could realistically repay from the net cash flow and, and back-ending it in, in the later years, so...
Councilmember Finley?
When the technical review group meets and looks at these things, do they take a vote individually?
We do, no, we do it by, well, it's a voice vote, and it was unanimous.
Okay. That, that's really all I wanted to know.
Nobody's in the queue. The, I guess my, I guess what I'd like, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know your last name, is it Mary?
Yeah.
What's your last name, Mary?
Duval.
Mary Duval. If I were to vote for this and council were to move it forward, would it be possible to get someone from Thistle at second reading to answer the concern of, basically, this is it, this is the question? If the economy takes a downturn, and I know that you looked at pro formas, but pro formas are basically voodoo witch-doctoring that you put on an Excel spreadsheet, that people tend to think is a best-case scenario, I would like to know the answer to the question of, if there's an economic downturn such as the one that we experienced in two thousand and eight, what is different now than was true back then? And what is your financial condition so that any, any storm, financial storm that comes would be weathered and we don't get stuck holding the bag? Because I'm going to feel stupid, and, and people will think I'm stupid if I vote for this and it happens again. So, that, that is my concern. Harold Dominguez? No, actually, my concern is affordable housing, A. B, making sure that we take good care of the city's money, and C, then last but not least, people will think I'm an idiot. That is my concern, in that order. All right, Harold Dominguez? And I know it's already too late, you think I'm an idiot, Marsh, it's okay though.
I want to make one point, this is not coming back for a second reading, so if...
This is it? This is a resolution?
Correct.
Um...
It's by motion, so if council wanted to do it, you would need to, if you wanted to wait for that information, you would need to table this vote for the next regular session. What I don't know and I can't answer is how that fits in terms of the timing that they have with this, with CHAFPA.
My question is, is there, and again, no one's in the queue. I only say that so people don't think that I'm monopolizing the mic. Every time I say that, I feel like I'm saying it for the thousandth time. So there's no one in the queue. Is anyone opposed if there's a motion made to bring back the Thistle portion at the next regularly, at the next regular session to answer the question of financial?
So, so there is, there is a CHAFPA deadline for the application, so Mary might need to answer whether or not they can wait, or if it's just dead.
They have to answer that piece.
Ms. Duval?
So, we're applying for a state tax credit, along with a federal four percent credit. The state tax credit is very competitive, it's oversubscribed right now by about twenty-five million to one, given the list of everybody who's applied for that credit. And having local participation is, is very important, and it also, as Kathy said, helps leverage other funds that we're going after. So, we will have a much stronger application with your support now, so that we can turn that in next week.
And then I guess the, then let me ask...
So that, so we would prefer not to come back, but I don't know if I can answer your question satisfactorily, and I'll certainly try again if you want to break them down.
Let me cheat, and that is, how many lenders are lending money other than us in the thirty-eight-point-five million that you're asking for?
We have a solicitation out, and we've probably received roughly five or six offers to lend on it.
And you'll choose one?
I'm sorry?
And you'll choose one?
We will. We might choose a construction and a permanent lender, that's typically how a tax credit deal is structured.
Will those lenders have liens or secured loans on the property?
Yes.
Will we?
You'll be in a lower position than they are.
Right. Okay.
I haven't seen a City of Longmont covenant lately, so I'm not sure exactly how it reads, but that's typical.
So if two thousand and eleven happens again, they will step in and again, take the property, but we, unless there's equity in the property, will wind up, again, holding the bag? If that were to happen like it did back in two thousand and eight?
I think that Kathy's example of what happened at Blue Vista is illuminating, because I want to, I, I don't want to sound offensive, but I inherited Blue Vista. It was not my development, I didn't set it up, I could go on and on and on. But at the end of the day, the, the city of Longmont had land regulations that provided that the property, the portion of the property must always be used for affordable housing, to get the right kind of affordable housing. We, we reached an agreement with the bank, we had a settlement agreement, we paid cash to them, we did not walk away and necessarily leave the bank holding something. They wrote down the loan, they were repaid by the federal bailout of the banks, so the bank, the bank did not run away crying, and they recouped that money when they sold the property to the new developer, who was in fact our partner in the part, in the, in the deal to begin with.
And that's all awesome, but I didn't hear the City of Longmont in there.
But you, but the City of Longmont had the land regulations that maintained the affordability on that property, and I believe that was part of the, the next developer that came in had to build affordable housing. And that, that may have dovetailed with IH requirements, but if it had not, you still had a lot of leverage over the new person moving in to, to get that value of what you had lent to us. So, in, in the, in the case of a subsequent foreclosure now, with the money that you lend, I believe that typically your covenant runs with the land, and that the property maintains its affordability.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. We can, we can, we could give affordable housing to everybody in Longmont who needs it, if we just were willing to write a big enough check. And so, I mean, that happens all the time. The what? It would bounce, but my point is that somebody pays for it. In this case, that one-point-three million went into the value of the project, the bankers, Thistle, the new developer, they got that benefit, but the City of Longmont, yeah, we had some affordable housing for some citizens, and it helped us towards our total affordable housing stock, but we still didn't get our one-point-three, and I just don't want that six hundred thousand to be the next one-point-three. And it's always easier on round two, meaning people who overbuild the first time go bankrupt, I, then, I've done it several times, then you go in after them, and you buy it from the bank for cheap. And so that's what happened with Thistle, and again, I don't want to be the bank the first time around. So, I still don't know what I'll do. Councilmember Martin?
If it makes you feel any better, Mr. Mayor, I think that that is, this is a proper risk of the city's money, because after all, as a city, we do a bunch of stuff where we don't expect to be whole from a monetary standpoint. Our interest and our benefit is the welfare of our residents. And if our taking this risk raises the probability of this project succeeding at a higher level and extending the lifetime of this affordable housing as decent places for people to live, then I think that, well, once again, it's an appropriate risk, and if that happens and the city still takes some haircut on that money, it was still overall in line with the objectives of this city, which is to allow people who live here to live well.
But it's, it's an uncalculated risk, because we don't have the data, and there's other, anyway. Yes?
Mayor, so one of the options you also have is, we actually had to create a, we're going to have to convert a study session. Are we converting it to a regular session? We're having an LGID issue on another affordable housing project, we're in combination with the county. We could convert this one to a regular session next week and actually bring that information back that you're requesting. And I, if it, is it on the same time as a county? I think it's the same time on the county issue, correct? The February one CHAFPA, and so that, that could be a point where council could look at it next week, to give you the time.
Dr. Waters?
Yeah, the, part of what is a little discomforting is just getting squeezed on timing, right? Because of the February, February one deadline, you know, it's, unless you create another meeting, we can't act on this to, to make a decision if we were not to do it tonight to approve the loan and ever have a chance to see the financials, or, you know, because that's not part of our package. We got the, we got the write-up. I don't know how much of it, that addresses the risks and how they were calculated in two thousand and eleven versus now. That's part of my concern, feeling just a little squeezed, which was, became the same issue, and I don't, I don't know Thistle, I don't want to, you know, I appreciate the work they do and, and, and the number of people they serve, but it, but the, was, the same dynamic played out with LHA. It's like, well, we want to do this, but we can't take this up today, we have too many other things on the agenda, it came in late. So I'm, I am concerned about that, and that, that we're asked to, to assume a risk, and I, I'm not sure, now, Councilmember Martin, I'm not certain how to calculate the risk. So I don't know if it's a good risk or a bad risk, because I don't know what the, what the risk is. I'm not suggesting... I'm not suggesting investment's a bad investment, but I don't know what the risk is that goes along with that, with that investment. That's the concern.
Nobody's in the queue. Councilmember Beck?
Thank you. I, I think it would be a good idea to have this come back next week as a regular session to look at that data and if you can figure out a risk. I don't know how to calculate it either, but it would be interesting to know what indebtedness Thistle has.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I move that we make a-
Do you want to buy-
Is there a motion on the floor? What's the motion?
Do you want to buy for Kate the 2?
Yeah, that was my next motion coming. Yeah. Is there a motion on the floor? So, yes, and it just feels like so many motions on the floor. The whole, the whole council is in motion. Go ahead.
So I move that the next, the next council meeting, which is a study session, be moved to a regular session so that we can get the Thistle information.
I'll second that. Mayor Protem?
Well, I, I sort of feel like we're trying to second-guess and micromanage the technical review group that consists of professionals who've already reviewed this and unanimously approved it. And surely they evaluated risk. They are perfectly aware of what happened. I would, I would like to just see us vote on this tonight so that it could move forward with the best opportunities for getting money from Chaffa.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Begley. I agree with the Mayor Protem. I would rather see it move forward now. I would rather see both of these move forward now. However, I will support a one-week deferment if that is enough time, if that leaves enough time for Thistle to move ahead without losing opportunity on, on what they've got to do.
Ms. Duval, is that enough time? If we waited one week and then you just bring in the pro formas and show us?
It would probably would be helpful to really understand what would be satisfactory.
I want, me personally, I'd like to see the pro formas, meaning what do you expect to bring in on the property?
For the pro, the operating pro formas for the apartments in Longmont?
Yeah, I want to see basically the, the next, you know, 20, 20, actually, not even that far. I just want to see, what, 10 years of pro formas?
That we have.
Yes. I want, yeah, but I also want to see what other properties you own. If I was, we're basically a bank, and I want to have a 15-minute conversation on you convince, at least not just me, but convince us that you are not going to go insolvent and walk away with our money. Whatever information you feel that you need to share so that, you know, that you've got some flexibility, but, oh, no, no, no. If we, if we, if we can't make the payment for whatever reason, we can reach into this fund or we can, we've got this, we're not over-leveraged, we're not, you know, whatever the case may be, just to make sure you can make that payment.
If the alternative is a no vote tonight and another chance to come back and answer those questions, we would love to have another chance.
Yeah.
I would prefer that-
I don't know how the vote would go tonight.
Our financials are not, you know, public information.
So Mayor, I was over there whispering, trying to figure out if we might be able to have an exec session on the financials. I, I probably need further conversation to make that determination. Just, I was asking you, you know, is that confidential information or not? Well, we've kind of got something planned next Tuesday. We do. We could juggle during the meeting or, you know, it's, it's an evolving concept. Let's see what my councilmembers think. Councilmember Martin?
So we have a long executive schedule, session scheduled for next week. Can we reschedule the judge and introduce this? Because I don't think he's hanging on our every word.
Oh, he better be.
We can reschedule the judge and, and give you all time. That'd be better.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? I think just, I mean, anyone opposed to replacing the judge's slot with an exec session? Or pre-session on this matter? Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
We just got to figure out what can be public and what can't on this.
Whatever we need, just, again, basically, just, I want, I do not want to be in a situation where I voted for something and then we, Thistle goes, oops, that's the second time. That's it. That's all, that's really all I'm asking. And then, another thing is, the reason if, I mean, I know that it's more likely to pass, but if there were, I believe the number was 25 million to one, although I'm guessing that that was a little bit of an exaggeration. It sounds like no matter what we do or anybody does, the likelihood of getting state assistance is slim. So anyway, let's do that if nobody's opposed and if you're willing to, to talk.
One of the other things I'm going to ask staff to do and just to, the infrastructure piece, actually going back to our other conversation, was a significant component of this in terms of a lift station in a sewer line. And, and that was one of the issues that actually took so long. And so I'm going to have staff prepare that history because that was a nuance I'm not really familiar with, other than I knew it was an issue once I got here when other folks were looking at it, so.
And then also, let's bifurcate the two issues. And would it be possible to vote on one tonight?
Yeah, you can vote on the-
On the, on the-
On the mobile home.
Mobile homes? So I guess, do you want to continue with your moment, your amendment or your mo, do you want to follow through on your motion to vote on both of these next week? Or do you want to amend your motion to vote on one and then next week?
I would like to amend my motion that we have a regular session next week to vote only on the Thistle project, to look at the pro formas and vote on that, and that we vote tonight on the mobile home project.
Second. Dr. Waters?
I just want to be clear. Obviously, I have more to learn about the corporate nature of Thistle. The comment that their financials are not public wouldn't mean that we don't get to see their financials, or it does?
It would mean that, I think it would mean the venue that you see those and how we have to do this.
Thistle's a private corporation? You're a private nonprofit?
Right.
I'll just want to make any, any comment other than, then we would get a chance to see that. And it, and even if we don't have a full calculus, right, in terms of risk analysis, I just feel like it's due diligence. We have an obligation. If it, you know, if, if something, if the economy falls apart and something were to go bad and not have taken whatever steps we need to, then we will have fallen short in terms of our due diligence responsibility. Even if we vote to approve and it falls apart later, we will have done whatever we need to to protect the, the interests of the city and, and also try to, protect the interest of the residents of the existing housing managed by Thistle.
All right, let's vote. Oh, so, sorry, we are voting on, voting, we are voting only on having a regular session next week, at which point we will vote on the Thistle project. No, that, that is going to be, we will do that at this meeting, but we're going to have a pre-session or an executive session, depending on the advice of council after this meeting, at which, at 6 o'clock. That's not part of the motion, but that's just what we're going to do with Ms. Duval and, and Thistle. So this is for the regular session next week, just to change it from a study session to a regular session for this purpose.
One of the questions I want council to think of, this is a change in process that we've historically utilized with this fund. I'm going to start evaluating this conversation and how we can look at that so people can be aware of it, but I will be coming back to council for some direction on, on the process you all want to see in terms of this type of conversation.
Remember when I said Harold's good at what he does because of, this is it. This is what I was talking about right here. All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. So we will see Ms. Duval on Tuesday at 6:00, and then again at 7:00, and then, the what?
It won't be Mary. She has a-
We will be, we will miss you, but someone will show up on her behalf.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have another motion to make? Okay?
I move that we vote on whether or not we're going to fund the mobile home part.
Would you want to just make a motion to fund it?
Yep. I move that we fund the mobile home part.
All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously, so.
Thank you.
You're, why make you wait, right?
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. What else is there on that list? All right, yes, we move on to general business, land development code amendments. Mr. Don Berchett. How long you think this is going to take, my dear friend? A while? Okay.
Mayor, members of council, I think you'll determine how long this goes.
Indeed, we will. Do you want, you guys want to take a five-minute break or is there any chance of finishing before 11 o'clock?
No.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. I could have kept people talking and then said, hey, it's after 11:00. Technically, we're done. We need 24 hours notice to post. So, we haven't posted this meeting. The what?
I'm moving extended meeting.
Okay, we haven't had a second. Just kidding, it's been seconded. Let's vote. I was just going to talk you through. Ooh, Bonnie voted no. Everybody else voted yes.
I'm surprised.
Bonnie, you are, Bonnie throws blows, man. You know how to counsel. All right, time is yours. Some of it. Till we get bored. Or tired.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Bagley.
Mr. Mayor, I like that better. Mr. Mayor Bagley.
Mr. Mayor Bagley. Don Berchett, planning manager for the city of Longmont. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the next phase of the land development code updates. And tonight, I wanted to talk to you a little bit. And with me tonight, I also have Matt Goble from Clarion and Associates. And so, the main thing that I want to do tonight, and I had written this out, and now I'm completely lost, because it's late. So, I apologize, I'm a little incoherent here. But, one of our goals tonight is to go over the land development code updates with you tonight. We want to get some policy direction from you on a number of the topics that we've included in your packet. And specifically, we want to make sure that we go over some of the items that the council has identified in your 2018 work plan that we think are related to these development code updates. Our hope is that the council will provide staff with specific direction tonight on your priorities for this work, and any preferred timing for completion of these updates based on your goals in your city council work plan. The work on the land development code, as well as other plans noted in our council communication, directly relate to and have an impact on Section B of the council work plan, which is a vision for Longmont's places. Many of the items that we will discuss tonight have a role in helping the council achieve your goals. More specifically, they will help the council in meeting goals B2 and B3. First, I want to provide a little bit of background on the land development code. Staff began working on the land development code updates in 2016, after the adoption of Envision Longmont. The original scope of work for the land development code broke the work into multiple phases so that we could update the code as quickly as possible. Phase 1 was completed in 2018 with major revisions to the land development code. Those amendments allowed staff and the development community to begin implementing our comprehensive plan, Envision Longmont. When staff took this approach back in 2016, we knew that a second phase of code updates was going to be necessary. And we're here tonight to go over this second phase of code updates with you, and make sure that we have identified those items that council has discussed in the past. To help the council understand the scope of work as it's currently proposed, we have Matt Goble from Clarion and Associates. Matt is a director with Clarion and Associates, and one of our two project managers for this project. Matt has a presentation for the council tonight that we hope will allow you to see how the work could be completed, and then allow you to provide a specific direction on this proposed code work, which we believe will help you in achieving your goals. Please understand that we expect council to prioritize some of this work differently than what we have presented to you tonight. And that's okay, because the reason that we're here is that we want to make sure that we're doing what council needs to have done in the timeframe that you needed completed so that you can achieve your goals. So, please keep that in mind as Matt's going through the presentation, and understand that we are entrusted in understanding what your priorities are and what your timelines are for getting this done. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Don. Mayor, council members, good to see you all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Does that work? Mayor? I do have a presentation for you. It's about a dozen slides or so. The hour is late. I'll try to be brisk. I don't know that I can reach entertaining, but I'll try not to be boring necessarily. In a lot of ways, this is going to be a preview of coming attractions. And this is to tell you about the things that we're going to be coming back and talking with you all about quite a bit more over the next year. So, this is really an opportunity to just make sure, do a course correction if we need to, to make sure that we've identified your priorities for the coming year in terms of amending the code. So, with that, let me just jump right in. I've got three things that I want to accomplish. First of all, just a very quick reminder of our firm and who we are, in case any of you are not familiar with Clarion. Then I'll talk about the scope of work that we and the staff have laid out. And then we've got time spaced at the end for Q and A and discussion on all of the different scope items. Some of you know Clarion, some of you have seen us before, some of you may have not. I'm not going to spend time really on this slide, I just wanted to use it as an opportunity to say, we are proud of a long-working relationship with Longmont. We had a chance to work with you on Envision Longmont. We had a chance to work with you on the new code, and we're excited about the opportunity to really continue that relationship on this next project. We have a lot of experience from throughout the country, and I think, in particular, on some of these topics that we'll talk about tonight, we have a lot of best-practice knowledge from around Colorado and the country that we can bring to these topics. So, let's talk about the scope of work. The way we have conceived the amendments to the code for 2019 is to think about them in batches. And we have four batches that have been identified, very loosely, just kind of based on timing and thematic consistency. The first is going to be kind of a grab-bag of some things that we think are low-hanging fruit that we can do pretty quickly. And I'll talk about those in a minute. The second is a sustainability evaluation system that is a potential prelude to a larger project. And then the third and fourth batches are designed to integrate a little bit more substantial amendments to the code than are covered in Batch 1. So, I'm going to walk through each one of these for you in a little bit more detail. I just wanted you to have a sense of the overall structure. It's worth remembering, as we all know, that these are not taking place in a vacuum. The city has a lot of different projects underway. Some in the past, like Envision Longmont, some of which are underway still, like all the different river corridor protection projects. All of them are creating a bit of a moving target for everything that we're doing. So, it's just important to remember the planning framework that's going to affect everything that I talk about in this presentation. In terms of just the logistics of all those batches that I mentioned, we've got a fairly straightforward scope. We'll do a staff draft first, like we always do. We'll put together a first cut that we work with for your staff to make sure that we've identified the issues correctly and make any edits that we need to. Then we'll come back and do a public draft that we will present to you, and for wider public discussion. So, everything that you see will have been vetted through that staff draft process. We'll do the same process for each of the four modules. So, let me walk through each of those. I said modules, but they're batches. Batch 1. I said these are low-hanging fruit. I think these are things that the staff has identified that can be done pretty quickly. First of all is the affordable housing incentives. You have updated that program, the 12%. You are now going to be meeting next week to go through some policy discussion about potential new incentives that build on top of that new threshold. Our job as the code drafters is just going to be to codify the results of that policy discussion that you're already scheduled to have starting next week. So, that's what that first item refers to. The multifamily definition. You've already had some internal policy interpretations made that allow multiple individual structures owned by a collective unit on one site. I think the project was Veterans Village. We just want to make sure that the code clearly allows those types of projects in the future. And that's what this particular amendment is designed to do. It's really a cleanup. It's going to codify an interpretation that's already been made by your planning staff. Itinerant uses. Things like seasonal sales and mobile food vending. We need to get better standards in the code for that type of thing. And so, this one, we need to bring to you all some, a little bit more kind of fleshed-out understanding of the impacts of those uses and what the standards might be.
Just something to keep in mind.
Sure.
You take away the taco stands, you'll never work in this town again.
Message, message, heart.
Right, good, good. And ice cream, yeah.
And ice cream. Every community has its own. Parking. Align with transportation staff comments and consider exemption for parking within the GID. Consider there. It just says consider. I did get a chance to hear the public comment on this issue earlier in the evening, and I just wanted to stress that this is not set in stone. What our direction has been so far is to try to understand the history of this issue in Longmont, and to present some recommendations for moving forward for a variety of amendments to the parking. But I don't want to act like that's some done deal, or some direction that we've been given. That's not at all the case. That's the first batch. And again, you're going to hear more about all these things, and you're going to see an actual collection of these as part of a package. Now, Batch 2 is something different. Batch 2 is something that we have heard a lot of interest in from the council. We're going to call it a sustainability evaluation system. We have seen these called different things around the country, but that's a pretty common, you know, term for a system that's used to evaluate the pros and cons from a sustainability standpoint of a development project. The point of this batch is to come back and have a longer discussion with you all, a work session, about exactly where you would want to see this type of system used in Longmont. There's a lot of different variables to walk through when you're thinking about a system like this. We've written a few of them, and we've studied quite a few of them around the country, and they're all different, but they all have some common features. You need to think about things like the applicability of a system like this. Is it used community-wide, or is it just used in certain targeted areas? You need to think about the project applicability of a system like this. Does it apply to all new development? Does it apply just to variances? Does it apply to annexations? Does it apply to renovations, or just new projects? All those types of things. And then the subject, the subject matter that's regulated by the system is key. How big would Longmont potentially want a sustainability evaluation system to look like? If you're thinking just about environmental sustainability, even within that category, there's a lot of potential topics to think about. Waste reduction, you know, use of renewable energy sources, you know, efficient transportation networks, all those types of things. Other communities even move beyond environmental sustainability, and they go to social sustainability and economic sustainability. So, you start to get into a lot of different things here. The point of this is just to come back to you all in the spring with a framework for a discussion, a good meaty discussion at a workshop, where we can hear more from you all about what you're looking for from that type of system. When we get back to the Q and A, I'd like to come back to this slide and just see if you have more feedback for us tonight. Initial ideas about how we could scope this out. But just recognize that really, the scope here is to develop a scope for a larger project. We don't have the development of the actual system in our work plan right now. What we have is this workshop and this discussion. But then that would potentially lead into a supplementary project to develop this. So, now getting back into the more kind of nuts-and-bolts code drafting. These are all going to be going sequentially. So, Batch 1 and Batch 2 would be in the spring. Now, we're into the middle of the year, kind of mid-2019. We've got a variety of code amendments that relate to design standards and historic preservation. 3.1. You are currently working on the city's Design Standards and Construction Specs Manual that's being updated. That is going to necessitate some changes, some related changes in the land development code. So, that's what this refers to. That document really refers to all the public improvements for projects, and we need to make sure that all the private stuff is assembled and appropriately, you know, collected in the land development code. The standards for private development. A particular focus of that exercise is going to be landscaping. And that's why we've called it out as 3.2. We need to make sure that we just get all the relevant updates from that Design Standards Manual, and make them play well together with the landscaping standards in the code. 3.3. Historic neighborhood standards. The task here is to look at your historic areas and to try to strengthen the standards that especially relate to infill projects in historic residential areas. And then finally, historic preservation standards generally. There is a staff-led effort that's underway to update all those standards. That's what this task is, is to integrate all that stuff once it's been done into the code. So, these all generally relate to design and historic preservation. The final batch.
Excuse me?
Sir?
Sorry. Councilman Martin? Want to ask a question on that slide?
No, actually, I was just getting into the queue for when you got to the end.
Okay, cool. Keep going.
All right. Final batch. We're almost done. These are all about the natural environment. So, this is separate from the sustainability evaluation system that I mentioned. I had that earlier slide that talked about the variety of planning efforts that are underway, wildlife protection, and the safe brain projects. Those need a little bit of time to get further along and to coordinate those efforts. For example, looking at things like adjustments to riparian setbacks. Then, later in the project, we'll have the ability to kind of take that collective work and integrate it into the new code. And that's really what 4.1 is, is to, all along, we're going to have been monitoring those separate projects, but this is going to be to really integrate the results of that policy development into the code itself.
So, just to jump in, we've, so this council has already voted, and we're maintaining the 150-foot setback, right? So, I don't think this council wants advice on to go lower. It's just if we're going to offer variance, how might we think about that? If that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be clear. Okay.
Development near public lands. This is simply, it's not simple, but this would be something that would give city council the authority for more discretionary approvals for projects that are adjacent to public lands, like it could be a park, it could be a sensitive area. And I think that needs further discussion about kind of what those areas would be. And then finally, quality of life benchmarks and adequate public facilities. This is a section of your code that's actually pretty dated at this point. It just requires minimum level of public service in areas like, you know, public safety. It needs to be updated. I think a lot of that work is underway, and that is something that is included in this batch. It could be that we want to expand the universe of metrics for evaluating performance, quality of life, and that would be part of it. in Longmont and to present some recommendations for moving forward for a variety of amendments to the parking. But I don't want to act like that's some done deal or some direction that we've been given. That's not at all the case. That's the first batch. And again, you're going to hear more about all these things, and you're going to see an actual collection of these as part of a package. Now, Batch Two is something different. Batch Two is something that we have heard a lot of interest in from the council. We're going to call it a sustainability evaluation system. We have seen these called different things around the country, but that's a pretty common, you know, term for a system that's used to evaluate the pros and cons from a sustainability standpoint of a development project. The point of this batch is to come back and have a longer discussion with you all, a work session, about exactly where you would want to see this type of system used in Longmont. There's a lot of different variables to walk through when you're thinking about a system like this. We've written a few of them, and we've studied quite a few of them around the country, and they're all different, but they all have some common features. You need to think about things like the applicability of a system like this. Is it used community-wide, or is it just used in certain targeted areas? You need to think about the project applicability of a system like this. Does it apply to all new development? Does it apply just to variances? Does it apply to annexations? Does it apply to renovations or just new projects? All those types of things. And then the subject, the subject matter that's regulated by the system is key. How big would Longmont potentially want a sustainability evaluation system to look like? If you're thinking just about environmental sustainability, even within that category, there's a lot of potential topics to think about. Waste reduction, you know, use of renewable energy sources, you know, efficient transportation networks, all those types of things. Other communities even move beyond environmental sustainability, and they go to social sustainability and economic sustainability. So you start to get into a lot of different things here. The point of this is just to come back to you all in the spring with a framework for a discussion, a good meaty discussion at a workshop, where we can hear more from you all about what you're looking for from that type of system. When we get back to the Q and A, I'd like to come back to this slide and just see if you have more feedback for us tonight, initial ideas about how we could scope this out. But just recognize that really the scope here is to develop a scope for a larger project. We don't have the development of the actual system in our work plan right now. What we have is this workshop and this discussion. But then that would potentially lead into a supplementary project to develop this. So now getting back into the more kind of nuts and bolts code drafting. These are all going to be going sequentially. So Batch One and Batch Two would be in the spring. Now we're into the middle of the year, kind of mid-2019. We've got a variety of code amendments that relate to design standards and historic preservation. Three, one. You are currently working on the city's Design Standards and Construction Specs Manual that's being updated. That is going to necessitate some changes, some related changes in the land development code. So that's what this refers to. That document really refers to all the public improvements for projects, and we need to make sure that all the private stuff is assembled and appropriately, you know, collected in the land development code, the standards for private development. A particular focus of that exercise is going to be landscaping, and that's why we've called it out as 3.2. We need to make sure that we just get all the relevant updates from that Design Standards Manual and make them play well together with the landscaping standards in the code. Three, three. Historic neighborhood standards. The task here is to look at your historic areas and to try to strengthen the standards that especially relate to infill projects in historic residential areas. And then finally, historic preservation standards generally. There is a staff-led effort that's underway to update all those standards. That's what this task is, is to integrate all that stuff once it's been done into the code. So these all generally relate to design and historic preservation. The final batch.
Excuse me?
Sir.
Sorry. Councilmember Martin? Want to ask a question on that slide?
No, actually, I was just getting into the queue for when you got to the end.
Okay, cool. Keep going.
All right. Final batch. We're almost done. These are all about the natural environment. So this is separate from the sustainability evaluation system that I mentioned. I had that earlier slide that talked about the variety of planning efforts that are underway, wildlife protection and the safe brain projects. Those need a little bit of time to get further along and to coordinate those efforts. For example, looking at things like adjustments to riparian setbacks. Then later in the project, we'll have the ability to kind of take that collective work and integrate it into the new code. And that's really what 4.1 is, is to, all along, we're going to have been monitoring those separate projects, but this is going to be to really integrate the results of that policy development into the code itself.
So just to jump in, we've, so this council has already voted, and we're maintaining the 150-foot setback, right? So I don't think this council wants advice on to go lower. It's just if we're going to offer variance, how might we think about that, if that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I just want to be clear. Okay.
Development near public lands. This is simply, it's not simple, but this would be something that would give city council the authority for more discretionary approvals for projects that are adjacent to public lands, like it could be a park, it could be a sensitive area. And I think that needs further discussion about kind of what those areas would be. And then finally, quality of life benchmarks and adequate public facilities. This is a section of your code that's actually pretty dated at this point. It just requires minimum level of public service in areas like, you know, public safety. It needs to be updated. I think a lot of that work is underway, and that is something that is included in this batch. It could be that we want to expand the universe of metrics for evaluating performance, quality of life, and that would be part of this task as well. So these are all meant to be kind of in sequence. The schedule is here. We're starting right now in January. The goal is to get them done by early 2020. You heard Don mention earlier that we anticipate you might want to juggle the timing of some of these things, so that's feedback that we would like to hear from you all. That's one question, is have we gotten the sequencing of this right? Generally, this is the feedback that staff is looking for from you. In terms of the amendments to the code for 2019, have we gotten the issues right? Is this the right list, or is there something that's not on here that you'd like to see? Do you have any feedback on any of the substantive topics? And then just do your priorities align with the schedule that we've laid out for the drafting? So that's generally what we're looking at for all the batches, but I understand that there might be a specially focused comment on the sustainability evaluation system.
Can you go back to the?
Go ahead, Terrell.
Can you go back to the timeline? So one of the things that I want to talk to council about is, when we looked at these batches, Don and I had worked on some timing scenarios, and what we need to see is really, so you see the sustainability evaluation system in that March-April-May timeframe. The one that we really need to get some direction from council on today is you see Batch Four, Protecting and Enhancing the Natural Environment. In a different slide that we had, we actually moved that one up. One of the things that was embedded in that is that creates a move in the Wildlife Management Plan where we would have to deal with the riparian corridors more quickly, and so we would restart restructuring all of those pieces. But what we need is council direction, because we haven't really received that in terms of what is your priority in terms of doing this? Because the other component that comes into play, and this is one of council's questions to me, is what do we delay or what do we stop? I mean, there is going to have to be some movement in this in order to get that capacity done.
This is for all development in our city, not just the river corridor, correct?
Correct. But there were pieces that council was very specific about that's embedded in this. And so when we look at that, that's Batch Four. And so if council wants to move Batch Four up to a Batch Three or a Batch One, then I'm going to have to move the Wildlife Management Plan and divide that in a different component so we can deal with those issues that are specifically going to be considered in that area.
We made a regular session next week. Why can't we just do it then? I'm kidding. All right, Councilmember Martin.
Funny you should say that, Mr. Manager. What we heard in the public invited to speak this evening is that the people whose special interest is design standards and historic preservations were saying, "Don't change anything." And the people whose interest is in protecting our natural environment were saying, "Let's get it done." And I think that maybe we should listen to them, and that's an argument for doing what you're talking about. I understand that you were explaining that it creates problems, but it seems like we should be looking at protecting, enhancing the natural environment earlier. And additionally, it seems to me that consideration of that, and maybe that's what these vertical gray bars mean, but it seems to me that consideration of that and consideration of the sustainability evaluation system need to be done together. Do I understand correctly that March-April-May on the sustainability evaluation system is a process of deciding the scope and not even specification, but just sort of the system context, the broad outlines of the thing? And that any actual development work in terms of creating an automated system would happen after that? Is that correct?
That is the current intent, yes, council members. So that would actually be, that would actually be off the screen altogether. That would be a separate project from what we've got here. So the March-April-May would just be that developing, doing the background research, developing that kind of material for you all to review, and then having that workshop.
So you mean it wouldn't be done by 2020? The system wouldn't be done and be able to be used for?
Just as part of the rearranging that I was talking about. So if that's the piece, then we're going to have to move some things, move that up, slide other components down, similar to the chart that I provided when I presented generally based on the conversation with Don.
Because it seems like if we are, one of the intents that we just, for this system that we discussed is in using it to decide whether variances were to be granted based on environmental impact. And if we're going to do that, we need to have it done by about the beginning of 2020.
Correct. So if you look at my chart, we moved that piece up.
Do we see your chart?
No.
Okay.
I thought it was going to be in here, but anyway. So if you remember the chart that I presented in the broader meeting, we would, the one on the Friday?
Yeah.
I will send that to council.
The little gray lines, the yellow with the gray lines.
Here's where the, here's where the policy direction is really going to be critical, because you're seeing competing needs coming into play now. And so if we want to say, well, we'll take the housing component because council said that the incentives are important, and we continue moving that, and we move some of the itinerant uses in the parking down, we then slide the sustainability evaluation system up. Here's the piece that's not part of their work that feeds into their work, and that's the Wildlife Management Plan, where we'll need to then reverse that, because the Wildlife Management Plan is two components. One, our broader properties that we have in different area, and then specifically properties that are in the urbanized area, along river corridors, near parks, greenways, and those types of things. We'll flip that one too, to start that process earlier so that it can then feed into the protecting and enhancing the natural environment. But understand, when we make those three moves, then these other items slide down. Or we dedicate more money or staff to deal with this issue. That's the trade-off that we're going to have to make in this conversation.
So I guess my question is, when that, I mean, when, I just gave that to Councilmember Martin, the graph that you were referring to. What's the difference between this and that graph? There's a difference, meaning there's timing differences. So what's different than what was presented at that meeting?
So when I looked at that, the sustainability evaluation system was up faster, and the protecting, enhancing the natural environment was up, and we slid down the design standards and historic preservation in the housing, itinerant uses, and parking. And that's what I indicated we needed to talk to council about and how we did this. Let me see if I can find that.
Can he do this?
Do what?
Can he, can Clarion do this? I'm, it's the graph. I'm sorry, you can't see it, your yellow graph.
We will, based on our conversation, we have to restructure the work. We'll have to completely, we will have to rearrange this to get to there.
But you can't.
We have to, yes, and we will have to look at the cost and the staffing pieces to do
All right, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I have a couple of things. You have Batch Two, the Sustainability Evaluation System. We already have an SES system that five of our top-level staff have actually worked on, that we've been using. What is different? Have you seen that?
I have.
And why is it not something we can use? It seems to work for many developments or many areas, so.
I think the direction we've been given is that that is one thing that should be evaluated as part of this system, as part of kind of taking the system to the next level. There very well could be parts of that that should be carried forward and built on. I don't want to prejudge it at all. I haven't really studied in detail yet. But the direction we've been given is to try to take a broader perspective. So, but recognizing that the city is not starting from scratch, that you already have done things. You've adopted a sustainability plan. You've got that system in place.
So knowing that, what are the chances of moving that sustainable evaluation system down? Because we do have something to work with in the interim.
So I think the challenge with the system that we have in play now is, what do you measure against? In terms of the way the system's designed as it is, is you measure different projects as you would design it, and that's the comparison piece in those projects. That's different than really looking at this piece, because this is really looking, as Councilmember Waters has indicated, a triple bottom line. And so some of the questions that we need to get some initial feedback that he was talking about is, do you measure against the development that's already there? Do you measure against a desired development condition that you want to see? And those are the pieces that you bring in. Do you only bring a component of the environmental sustainability? Or, and obviously, you've all talked about the triple bottom line, so then when you look at a commercial development, you're going to look at contribution to the economy. If you're looking at residential, what does the housing component look like in dealing with those issues? Those are the things that start coming into play in this.
Okay.
The fundamental question in this world is really going to be complication, because these systems have been all over in terms of how complicated they are and how simple they are, and how that has to be implemented. One that's been referenced is Canmore, Canada, I think it's in British Columbia. Their system's very complex and has a lot of weighting components to it. Other systems get to the same point, but they're simple. Those are some of the things that we're going to need some feedback on in terms of what generally are you looking for. We've had general conversations where we've had that, but we want to make sure we're taking information from you all into account before we continue moving forward on this.
Okay. Yes, go ahead. You were going to say something.
I just wanted to add on to that. We really see that workshop as an opportunity to have a structured conversation, like the manager says, where we really try to deconstruct this idea of a system and think about all the different component parts, which pieces do you want to focus on. What is the scope of the issues that you're looking at? What are the administrative aspects of the program to think about? The staffing requirements, the technical requirements? What are the, what are the applicability issues that I talked about? For all those different things, there's a lot of models out there in the country, and I think, and internationally. And we could bring you examples of other communities and how they've successfully or not successfully had these programs in place. I think a fundamental question is, what's the relationship of that system to the rest of the code? Because a lot of communities use these as kind of add-ons. You know, if you've got a fundamental thing that's really important to Longmont, that's a requirement in your zoning code. But you might use a sustainability system as an optional incentive tool on top of that to get even better quality development. The riparian setback's really important. That's in your code. But you're using the sustainability system on top of that to get additional added quality. That's the way a lot of communities use these systems, but we just, we need to flush out some of those mechanics with you to understand, is that what you're thinking about with the system, or are there other models we should be thinking through?
Can you go back to the graph?
The timeline?
Yeah. Now, this one. I would want to move the protecting and enhancing the natural environment up, and for two reasons. First of all, we are having panel discussions with the development community, the residents, et cetera, on how they want this city to look and what our vision is. I don't know how we can decide things unless we know what the code's going to be. So I would, I would prefer that we may move Batch Four up to probably at least Three. And, shoot, I was going to say something else. Oh, my question is, when does the Wildlife Management? What is the next word? Plan?
Right.
It is late. What was the timeline for finishing that? And are we going to be able to do it in sync? I mean, together?
So that's part of some of the feedback that we're waiting on tonight. So what I've talked to public, or talked to Dale about, is if you all wanted to move the protecting and enhancing the natural environment up, and that's specifically related to those areas adjacent to development. We will then take that component of the Wildlife Management Plan and start with that and finish that work so that it can then inform this, because as he indicated earlier in the presentation, there is a process in that, which we had to get this done and then this. This was assuming that all of that was done, and then we engage in it. So what we would do is start with the areas where, in the Wildlife Management Plan that deals with areas of development, finish that work. That then feeds into their piece. And then the other areas, like Sandstone Ranch and some of those areas that aren't adjacent to development, we'll bring in as a second phase of the Wildlife Management Plan.
I'm going to move then that we move Batch Four up to Batch Three. Just switch those two around and see if we can work it in with conjunction in the Wildlife Management Plan so we can get them done together or close.
Mayor Potem?
Yes, it is very late. So I have much the same comments as Joan, but I would urge you to take a look at that Sustainability Evaluation System. Cal Youngberg spent a lot of time evaluating systems all over this country and several others. And I think an important thing is that this was specific, he was looking at it specifically to evaluate the triple bottom line, but for public works, for public works projects. So it's geared more towards civil engineering, but that doesn't mean that it has to stay that way. And a lot of work was put into that. So I'd just like you to take a look at it. And by the way, to me, this, I've heard a lot of people lately say, "People, planet, profit," as the triple bottom line. I don't think that really, that's sort of twisting it a little bit. It's really about social equity and about environmental sustainability and about economic sustainability, not just profit, but something has to be economically viable and it has to be sustainable. That's very different from profit. So, anyway. I wanted to bring in a couple of things that are specific to different things. For housing, I would like us to at least have a discussion of allowing some buildings down in our lowlands to be up to six stories high. I don't think that's too much to ask, and developers make more of a profit for that density. Not all over, just along the main strips and down where the town begins to get low down along South Main. Under affordable housing incentives, I want us to seriously consider eliminating the, well, we need to consider the appeals process, because that was offered as an incentive. None of the developers took that until recently, and now that we have an inclusionary housing in place, that will eliminate any appeals at all. So we need to remove that as an incentive. It needs to be the same process as everyone else, so that our citizens have the same rights as developers for appeal. Under multifamily definition, one of the things we need to kind of clarify is what constitutes To me, a live-work place is a big, usually, usually a former warehouse that's been converted to artist studio where they live and work. It's not like. It's not like I'm going to rent out the basement or something to... Anyway, it's the same person lives and works in the same place, but we should have that discussion. For itinerant uses, would that include, say, tiny housing, tiny house villages or use?
Probably not, if they were intended to be permanent. They would fall more under that, or long-term, they would fall more under that multifamily definition. This is more the really short-term stuff.
Under batch three, which I, I agree, I would like to see batch four moved up, if that's possible, because the environment is more fragile than our, they're both really important to preserving and moving us forward, but in a smart way. But the, the environment is more fragile, and we're currently redoing the whole river to make it more resilient. So I think it would be good, if we could, to move that up and try to make some of those decisions, so that people know what can be developed and what can't be developed and When we talk about the historic east side, we also have a historic west side, and we don't want to be forgotten. And it's not just historic, we need to preserve the places that are not HOA-protected, where just ordinary people live, and we shovel our own sidewalks, and we plant our own bushes, and we want to keep it that way. We need some protection because of a whole lot of things. In the batch four, I would like us to also be talking about noise and light in terms of development of the river corridor. And, okay, I'll shut up now. Thank you very much. I really like the work Clarion has done. They did a very good job on the land code, making it not just comprehensible, but visually appealing and easier for people, for ordinary people to understand.
Good to hear, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Help me with how I should think about what we're doing here, because I hear interests or preferences being expressed. And I'm going to offer some that are maybe contradictory. So we're going to be giving now mixed direction to this consultant, which I don't think is a good idea.
None of, none of this is direction, unless you get a vote of four. This is just people expressing their opinion.
Because I see him taking notes.
Yes.
And I just want to make certain if he's taking notes that he interprets as direction or as noting whose ideas these are.
Right, so they should just be noting who's got ideas.
Okay, so now let me go on with a couple of questions. Harold, in the, in the, it wasn't a flow chart, it was kind of a time...
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, no, you're not, oh, sorry, my phone was laid down on your mute button.
That's a great excuse.
And I, and I cleared the queue, so, sorry. Get back in, guys.
I know when I'm, I know when I'm done.
Dr. Waters?
Is there, now he's hiding from me. Oh, there he is.
I know, I'm calling it up, so.
It would be helpful to know, of all the, if I don't think about batches so much, even within the batches, what's the sequence? Is there, are there dependencies, right? Because you've suggested what, what decision informs another, and it, and it has occurred to me from the outset here that there are, probably are some dependencies. It would be helpful to know, because, because at some point then you might, you might un-batch these batches and say, you know, here's a, here's the sequence, whether it's in a batch or not, of decisions that have to be made, number one. So I'm curious what those are. So this is helpful. In relationship specifically to how we're going to evaluate proposed development, we were, we're referring it now to it as the SES. We've used that kind of euphemistically or as a placeholder for a system, or an instrument, or a tool, or a protocol, whatever, however it manifests, either it's a system or just a set of instruments. When did we, when did we adopt the land code?
September of last...
Twenty eighteen.
So before we adopted the land code?
Correct.
We said, I think, in fact, we, it was, it was maybe before, it was maybe August, we're reviewing a proposal, an application for consideration for annexation, whatever the right term, right?
Correct.
Be certified. And we all would remember the project and the map, and as we're reviewing that, that was prior to finalizing the land code. It was on that evening that we said, we want proposals, any, any variances inside the, requested inside the 150-foot setback should come to this group. And, and connected that, to that, when we were updating the land code, we, we gave direction that we wanted to see a new way to evaluate proposed development projects. Now, I don't remember the night that that occurred, but those things happen, it's been, I don't know, how long? Three or four months?
Correct.
Right? So I, I have to say, I'm not happy about seeing three or four months from now, starting a discussion that's going to take three or four months to structure that system. For me, if, if there's, if we have any say on any development project proposed in the city, and I know that, that those go to P and Z.
Correct.
But any of those that might come to us, I can tell you how I'm going to vote on them until we have that system.
Correct.
I think we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to the community, to say, we are going to know, we're going to, and I think personally, this is just my opinion now, because we're not given direction, obviously, that I would want to see a system that does bring us measures of, of impact on the environment, on social equity, as part of a, a, a triple bottom line, in addition to the benefits to developers. And we're not going to get development if people don't make money doing it, but I agree that it goes way beyond that.
Correct.
So we, we have measurable, and then, and then measured impacts on the environment, on our, our social equity and on our population, as well as on the, on the benefits to developers. For me, that's like a threshold, right? And I don't know what the relationship is in terms of the dependency between that and wildlife and river corridors, or, or updated plans. I don't know if there's a dependent sequence there. But I do think that there's a relationship between the wildlife and river corridor plans and what we're doing with a visioning process, right? So if, to the, for, for my purposes, that, there is a sequence there and a set of priorities there. And in the batch, that first batch that included housing, there are some pieces from our inclusionary housing ordinance or other parts of the package.
Correct.
That they need to be, you know, but we ought to be able to address those, that shouldn't take a lot of debate. We made a set of, we've made a set of decisions and an ordinance, that'd be pretty straightforward. I mean, that should just be kind of pretty simple, right? To get those on an agenda and get those passed, to update the code for the, but that ordinance is in place. I was concerned when we passed that ordinance, that we could have added one sentence that would take the pressure off needing to get the land code updated, but we chose not to do that, so now we're talking about batches. That said, I, I think we ought to unpackage some of the, or un-batch some of the batches to, if we have to address, if we could address the affordable housing elements, right?
Correct.
In the land code. Yet, I, I have to say, are there, are there like three models you would point to to say, those are probably the best three, or the most, three most popular, or the three most relevant systems for, take our SES out of it for a minute, because that was for evaluating public works projects, right? But for private development, what are the three top? Where are they being used? How similar are those communities to ours? And, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, is that like top of mind?
Our firm just did one for Norfolk, Virginia. It's a code that's focused especially on resiliency because of climate change there. I would look at that one. Austin, Texas, has one that's focused more on kind of urban design issues and green development, so that's another place to start. Those are two.
See, I would, that would be my assumption. I mean, they're on top of it. It's like, we don't have to invent any of that stuff. It's, things are being used and can be adapted, I suppose.
But that, that's a good point. Both of, both of those systems, well, not the Norfolk, because that's new, but Austin has had to adapt theirs many times because of just changing issues. So that's something we would talk about.
So the last thing I would say, is there are some of these, if I were to go back to that batching slide, the, I don't want to, I mean, we're going, now we're going to be setting priorities, right? And once you do that, something's at the top and something's at the bottom, and you just got to own, you know, that you set some at the top and some at the bottom. So for me, getting the inclusionary housing zoning pieces in the land code, I think has to happen, but should be straightforward. Then it's the, then it's the evaluation tool or instrument. It's our, it's our environmental concerns, right? Wildlife and river corridors. And as far as I'm concerned, I want to be on a council that addresses those. Anything that's going to go beyond the end of this council, I'd like to know what those are, and I, parking, the historic preservation, things that don't, people don't want us to change, you know? If we don't get to those as a council, let the next council take those up. But there are some things we've been focused on that I want to have a chance to, to assume some responsibility for before this council's work is done.
Correct. So, real quick, and one of the things we got bogged up when, and I talked about this earlier, is the same staff got tied up in many other issues, which started shifting things, which is why I wanted to have this conversation today, because if you look at what Don and I kind of talked about prior to this, and, and again, two different viewpoints, one that the consultant put together and said, here's how we're looking at it, one that we put together saying, me sitting down with Don going, here's what I think the council is going to want to do, but I need to get official direction on what the council's going to want to do, because I also don't want to overrun our headlights and, and make policy. And, and so, we've learned that lesson. And so when you look at this list, you have the special district ordinance, which you all directed us to bring to you now. That's up here, assuming that you all moved through it. Then you have the affordable housing incentives, which we're going to start next week in that conversation. Then you move into the SES model, and you see that there. When Don and I talked about this, this is going to be dependent on if we can bring you these models from these other communities and we can kind of move in that direction, that may be a shorter timeframe. If it's going to be more customized and we're going to get more nuanced, then that's going to automatically start extending that timeline out. So that's really going to be dependent upon the complexity and how the council wants to move in that world, so that'll adjust the time.
I like this schedule.
And, and so then...
Far, far better.
And so then you see the wildlife management plan, and the reason why you see the wildlife management plan related to development, that's me bifurcating those two components, so we can move on the development plan earlier. And then you see the development of the public lands. Don and I had an extensive conversation, I showed him this, I said, here's what we're going to do. My question is, can we do it? And we're going to have to rearrange some things, which means things like itinerant uses, parking, historic preservation. In order to do this, those are going to have to fall, and we have to be willing to do that. If we want to do it all, what you're going to hear from me is, A, I need a lot more, I mean, need more money to accelerate this for them, but we'll see what we can do, so money or staff are going to be these issues.
Jim Collins once looked at me twenty years ago and said, Brian, when can you get it done? And I said, two weeks. He shook his head, he says, no, 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 no. You don't understand. I'm going to let you answer one more time, because if you say two weeks, that's your deadline. You can set the deadline, but you will not miss your deadline. This went public.
Correct.
You know, this right here was...
Correct.
We put this out, when I saw this, you know, I was like, all right, this is the deadline. So if we have to put off parking and all those other things, this is the priority. I would like to, this all ends by the end of June. I mean, Main Street Corridor and the RSVP, that's going to go on for years. But we have a work plan that I would like to actually see the foundation laid before this term is up. That would, this, this deadline gives us four months between the end of June and November, when a new council might come or will come on board to some extent, to, you know, allow us to actually get this done. So I, I mean, everyone here was like, yeah, 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 yeah. Do we have a motion to actually make this the deadline? I'm just asking. Yes, Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Since we're all just providing our personal preferences on these things at this point, no, I definitely, I would say that I am by and large in agreement with what Councilmember Waters was, was talking about, as far as, there seem to be certain things that are more interconnected than others as we go through the batches, so un-batching them in concept to a certain extent. For instance, the itinerant uses and the parking, that's just already been mentioned, as well as trying to get certain things done before the November deadline, as far as this council is concerned. Concern, so, and I also agree that it'd be okay to move down the historic preservation as, there was a lot of conversation when the original, the first time around on land development code around the preservation of those neighborhoods, and they by and large, I think those folks seemed very happy with what we ended up settling on, and so I don't think that's a pressing matter, as much as, you know, we're seeing some other issues where the folks are not yet so happy and are, are waiting for us. Not to mention also the point brought forth that there, you know, it is nice to have, you know, our code set when we do our visioning process for our, so those would be my preferences, which are just basically echoing what most people have already said.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that we need to have some clarification, because what we're, we're showing as though we, as though they are comparable, are two graphs of work that are no way comparable, and I don't even think they're about the same thing, because I think one of them is about what Clarion wants to do, and the other one is about what the staff is going to do. Is that not also correct?
No, this is about us reprioritizing the work that Clarion's going to do.
Well, no, so wait a second. So the yellow bars graph is about Clarion?
Yeah, they're part of it, because...
Okay, but, but this is not their work plan?
No, they said here...
Yeah.
Don and I talked about this. This is about reprioritizing based on the other components that, that come in where we're...
I don't know what you're saying when you say this, but I'm saying, is the, is the work plan that Clarion put up, is that the city's work plan, or is that the order in which Clarion is going to address, assisting with the plan?
They said, this is how we see it going with all of these batches.
Okay.
Prior, prior to the last meeting, I was starting to listen to what council was feeding back into the system, and I said, Don, here's where I think council is going to want to be on this type of system. So what we've done is we've parsed out, at least in this one of mine that you've seen, we have parsed out components of their batches, and so you can see the affordable housing incentives, where that was parsed out. We didn't keep the itinerant or the parking piece in there, we just pulled that.
Yeah.
We then just pulled the SES. We then just pulled the land development code. So in order to do that, if this is what council wants to see, three things they're going to work on.
Well, so, what I don't understand about the yellow bar graph is that it looks like these are all being worked in parallel, and yet there was discussion about some of these things not coming along because of contention between personnel, which means they inherently can't be worked in parallel. So which is it? I mean, if there are dependencies, then some of these are going to start later than others.
In my conversation with Don, I think the big dependency is on the wildlife management plan, which is a different group. That's in Public Works and Natural Resources, and that was the conversation that I talked about in terms of, instead of just finishing the wildlife plan, what we would have to do is take the component related to areas that are near development and really focus on that first, and, and complete that, which then will feed into the, the development piece.
All right, I think I understand. Not entirely. Hate to always be the stupid one in here, but I...
You're much stupider.
Well, I happen to, no, I'm not even going to say that. Well, I happen to, no, I'm not even gonna say that.
Awesome.
But, I, I, uh, maybe I'm trying to get more out of this graph than is there. Um, because I, I don't see how, how dependencies impact this. Um, but I assume on a future session, we will. So, I'd like to, um, make two comments of the sort that everybody else has been making. One is, I think it is essential to the SES that we be able to un-braid the three bottom lines. Uh, I understand that the one that we have now doesn't do that. And so you can get a score that says, this is a good one and this is a bad one. But you don't know whether the score is high, because it has a high envi- uh, economic return, but a terrible, uh, uh, environmental impact. And it's clear that the, uh, concerns of the public are more about environmental impact than they are about economic growth. So we better be able to take those things apart and have a floor on environmental impact, at least, where it says, there are things that we are not gonna do. Um, and yeah, the codes will say certain things that we aren't gonna do. Um, but they don't necessarily, for example, im- impact things like raising or lowering the temperature of the river. Um, whereas I assume an environmental impact assessment would take into account things like that. Um, so, I'd, I'd really like to just get that out on the table, that you can't have a single score if you have a triple bottom line. Um, and the other thing is, I'd like to repeat Councilmember Peck's motion. I think that we should absolutely, in a nuanced way, um, and, you know, taking into account dependencies where necessary. But we need, uh, to prioritize environmental protection concerns above historic preservation concerns. Nobody's willing to second my motion either.
Well, nobody's in the queue, but my question is, if you do look at this graph, the, that graph, right? My question is, for staff and Clarion, can you hit those marks with that graph? Or is what was presented to us in the public unrealistic? I mean, it's okay, I, I mean, I, I mean-
I think we can, if we can prioritize and we can do this, at least based on what I've heard, and we can stay focused on this, I think this is reasonable.
Are you saying that because that's what you think we want to hear?
No, no, 'cause here, here's what I will say.
Because we can re-line.
Yeah, I know. Here's what I would say. I think definitely having a solid draft in that timeframe i- is good. And then we have to just go through the adoption process. What I have, what I have to say in this is it depends on the complexity and how those conversations start going, once we move into this conversation. Um, if we start getting overly complex and building in different components and, and a lot of pieces, that's going to extend the timeline.
So-
And, and so-
I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we direct staff to bring back, before August 1st, a draft that encompasses the finalization of the following. A special district ordinance, an affordable housing incentives, SES model for development, wildlife management plan, wildlife-related to development plan, developments near public lands plan, development codes related to riparian areas plan, public improvement design standards plan, and the lean pro- and then other lean process improvements as needed. With a detailed timeline between now and August 1st, which is a, which is a full month after the end here, of how you're going to hit that target.
Yep.
And then, anyway, that was my motion. So I guess that's not gonna happen either. Alright, it's been seconded. Alright, Doc, uh, Councilmember Martin?
Well, the reason that I didn't second that motion is because I think that these items are not the same in one really crucial way. Some of them, like special district ordinance, have a definition of done. Most of them don't have a definition of done. And I don't know that, how you even make promise like that. I mean, I took these, these bars as estimates. This is how long our city manager thinks it's gonna take. But none of us really, with the exception of the first few, really know what they are. So, um, I don't know what I'd be voting for if I voted for the mayor's motion, honestly.
Let me re-clarify. Basically, we're here tonight, so, part of my frustration, not frustration, it's too late, but, and part of me is like, man, this is, this kinda feels like we're starting from scratch here. Really? We gotta go back to, you know, I kinda feel like we just went from, you know, my dad just told me that, yeah, we're going to Disneyland. How long is it gonna take? Two days. We just drove two days, and I'm like, wait a second, we still gotta drive two more days? No, no, no. So at some point, I guess, I was like, amendments aren't supposed to take, you know, till next February, right? I'm like, whoa, wait a second, that's, that's just one more year of spinning our wheels and arguing with each other and talking about this kinda stuff. I wanna get going, you know? And so, uh, in my mind, you know, the amendments had to do specifically with Dr. Waters. I mean, he, he brought up, look, let's just go ahead and put in a sentence in the affordable hous- or the inclusionary zoning ordinance that says, any conflict, IZ rules, right? We didn't do that, and I understand why, um, we didn't do that. Or at least, I, I mean, I know Dr. Waters disagrees, but I understand why. But the, uh, but we were then going to look, I mean, we've heard it time and time again from certain, uh, members in the community, it is developers as well, developers as well. Developers can't build, and the environmental protectors don't want any development until we have some clarity around this specific list. So our current land development code lacks, for example, it currently has special districts and metro districts that are prohibited. Right now, our affordable housing incentives are permitted in conjunction with our IZ ordinance. We have an SES model for development that pertains to public improvements, but not the overall process. We've got a wildlife management plan that currently is unknown, meaning, okay, well, I mean, are we gonna allow development along the cor- river corridor? Are we gonna allow it within the hundred and fifty feet? Uh, when, if at all? That will depend on the wildlife management plan. Again, wildlife-related to development, same thing. Developments near public lands, well, how close? What will it look like? What will we allow? When will we allow seven stories? Do we allow se- or six stories? Are we gonna, I mean, all these details are to supplement and address the concerns that Protect Our St. Vrain and the developers have been asking for the last year and a half. And so, this list is designed to tell staff, get this done first. Then we can worry about, I mean, we've already just spent time on the east side, on parking lots, on, I mean, I know people are asking those things, but that's kinda like, I, I mean, we've, we've hit those. And they might be tweaked later on, but we need to still address this list. And that gray box list has a lot of things that, right now, we can deal with in August, 'cause we've already taken a first shot at it. And the people, I mean, the people in our, there's people in our community, as Councilmember Rodriguez says, that have yet to get answers on this. And I don't wanna delay this anymore, because this, this needs to take priority, or else nothing's gonna get done.
Well, and understand too, on this, the bottom one, RSVP, that's also going to be a fundamental factor on this, simply because until you can deal with the floodplain issues, that's going to be looming out on a lot of these. And as we start hearing information in terms of, hopefully, final answers from the Army Corps, that's also part of another direction you all gave us, in terms of the stormwater, how we look at those fees in that piece. Because overriding all of this, as I've tried to look at it, is opportunity zone two and some of those other pieces, that if council wants to take advantage of it, this is where we have to make the decision on what the priority is.
Right, so, so, but we can't control the federal government.
Correct.
We've learned that.
Right.
We can't control BNSF. We can't control the Army Corps of Engineers. We can control these things. And if they're not done and ready, when those three groups walk in the door, if I'm on council, I'm gonna be upset.
Right.
Because now's the time that we should be dealing with these issues. So, anyway, Councilmember Peck? That's alright, you can take a nap, and then just chime in later. Councilmember Wa- it's already tomorrow, Councilmember Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. It, 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 just, this looks to me like just a rebatching, right? And I would label the first batch, low-hanging fruit. Oh, that would be like the first two. The next batch is, is environmental concerns. There's a, the, the next batch is, uh, design standards. And, I mean, it's just a, it's just a repackaging or reorganizing. Now, from a consultant perspective, in terms of how much work is involved, that's a different story. Um, but, this looks to me like, um, simply a reorganizing of the, you know, or reprioritizing the work. And if that's the case, some of these are, should be really straightforward, shouldn't require a whole lot of council, may require a lot of staff time, but not a whole lot of council, you know, debate. Which takes me to a, a question, is, maybe the second question. The first one, is it fair to see these as a rebatching?
Yes.
You know, re-clustering?
That's how we, that's how Don and I talked about it.
So here's the second question. What role do we play to either keep it on schedule or make it a train wreck in terms of bogging it down?
So I think what we'll need to do is we'll need to talk about these fundamental components, and we'll get more specific. But I think as we're coming down and bringing those forward, I think it's important that we stay focused. If we start adding components into this as we're moving along, and, and really, I don't wanna say this, because creativity needs to be in there, but I mean, if, if we really start adding different components and, and going down different roads, we need to know that upfront, because if we start doing it later in the process, it slows it down. Um, the other thing that I will say, uh, in terms of some of the things we've been dealing with, you know, you've heard, you know, obviously, when we talked about the inclusionary zoning, Don was involved in that conversation, Joni was involved in that conversation, and that took a significant amount of their time, lumping on top of that, the, the prairie dog issue, which Don and Dan dealt with. There are things that we need to be very cautious of in terms of adding to, to this workload that can derail us too. Um, I know it was a conversation last week, but, and I'm just using this as an example, if we lock up into a significant conversation on an item like backyard chickens or goats or whatever it is, that's gonna eat capacity from me, and so-
I will commit, if you get us a plan-
Right.
I think this council can follow it. We hear what you're saying, which is, we can hit the deadline if you all don't keep changing your minds and get off track. So part of my motion was, you bring us a plan-
Correct.
So that you can remind us, and I can remind everybody as the chair, and everybody can remind me, 'cause I've got the attention span of a squirrel, to hit the marks. And if we, I mean, if we go a little longer, that will be something we'll discuss, but just keep us on track.
Right.
And, anyway, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, again, clarifying the chart. Um, Councilmember Waters talked about this chart as though it is a priority list from top to bottom. But I'm not sure that that's true. I think it's just a list, because, um, lean process improvements are way down at the bottom of the priorities, but they happen, they get done really fast. They get done as fast as affordable housing. So, um, Harold, can you clarify, is this a prioritized list, or is it just a list?
Well, I would look at the completion times on this in terms of that. And the reason why I say that is because Joni's been working on the lean processes. Now, that's when we make the first run of saying, here's what we're going to do. There's obviously gonna be a continual evolution on this, in terms of some of the lean processes you, that you work on.
Sure, so, I mean, 'cause I a hundred percent agree that in terms of, of basic decision-making and, and roadmap that the staff's gotta do, apart from the vision, which are, these are horizontal, the vision things are vertical. Um, but a lot of these have to be in place to support the vision, or else we don't know how to get there. Um, so I'm, I'm a hundred percent clear that this is the list, and that things that aren't on this list, like parking, are squirrels. Um, but, are these, I mean, they're not priorities, right? Because Resilient St. Vrain project is not our lowest priority. It's nearly our highest priority.
I'm seeing this as priorities in terms of what we work with the planning department and Clarion on, and how we focus this. Resilient St. Vrain, from an infrastructure standpoint, is what Public Works and Natural Resources are working on in that design piece. Under, that's just continuing to go along as we move forward with that.
I don't think I understood what that meant.
So, Resilient St. Vrain and the River Project, that's a fundament- that's fundamentally an infrastructure project focused on getting the hundred-year floodplain contained within the design that we've talked about. That project's being managed by Public Works and Natural Resources.
So you're saying it's not a priority, because it's not a priority for Clarion, because they don't have any input in it?
No. This is all, we're correct. This is what we're talking about, related to this project. When we move into the conversation, and this is part of the conversation we wanna have at the retreat, is talking through these issues and, and then folding these other components. This is specific to the planning work and the work that Clarion is going to do and the planning staff. On this piece.
Okay.
I put Resilient St. Vrain in there, uh, in the Main Street corridor plan, 'cause they're in there. There were a lot of questions going into that meeting from people who were interested in this topic to understand, well, when are we gonna be out of the floodplain? What does that look like? And when I presented this, I couldn't keep taking it out, 'cause it kept moving the, the lines on me. I said, obviously, this goes beyond two-nine, when I made that presentation, because we're three to five years out on, on the River Project.
Oh.
So in essence, it is a rebatching, because you rebatch special district ordinance. Council had the first reading on that tonight. You all will decide at the next regular session. We're starting the affordable housing incentive discussion next week. And we have the lean process that we're doing internally. That's batch one.
Okay.
Batch two is the SES.
Yeah, so how do you tell that those, that those are batch one? Because they end soonest?
Correct, that's how I'm doing it.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get you to explain is, is how to read this chart.
I need to redo this. This was just as I did it for that meeting.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay.
Well, the council member from Ward Two yield the floor.
No, I never really yield the floor.
I know that. Dr. Waters?
Uh, you've got a long time. Maybe these aren't priorities, I don't, they are for me. But it's really about, in my mind, how we're gonna spend our time and what's most important for us to spend our time on as we go through the year. So to the degree that time is our most valuable asset, it becomes a priority for what we do in January or February. I mean, I don't, the, I, I'm not certain, you know, in terms of life and death, which of these are more important than another, from that kinda priority. That's, I just was thinking, looking at this, thinking, ah, we've only got so much time, and we're running out of it tonight. Uh, how are we gonna spend it? And what do we wanna get accomplished between now and the end of this council's term?
So, yeah, well, the, the motion to clarify, the motion is that we're going to make this chart policy with the direction to staff, that they hit the marks. That's essentially what it is, with the overall deadline of everything but the- That's essentially what it is, with the overall deadline of everything but the bottom two lines being the first of August, which gives them 30 days leeway. I, I mean, that's essentially what I'm doing. And then everything else that was listed on those batches becomes, it might be important, but it's not, we're making this more urgent. And that way, I mean, this right here is the foundation upon which future development in, what were the numbers, B3 and B4? Will, will proceed. And it'd be really cool if this council could lay that, that groundwork, so that the next council could then deal with individual projects and know what the guidelines are, and developers can start looking at it.
What you said is...
No, 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 I was, the, that was an explanation, but the motion is, this chart becomes, becomes policy, and staff is directed to hit all marks except the bottom two lines by August 1st. That is essentially the, the motion.
Or we bring back a plan, is what you said.
And, and part of that process is to bring back a plan as to how you will hit that mark.
And what you said is SES.
Special, every, special district ordinance, affordable housing incentives, SES model for development, wildlife management plan, wildlife related to development, developments near public lands, development codes related to riparian areas, public improvement design standards, and lean process improvements.
Yep.
That chart. That is the motion, and it's been seconded. There's no, yeah, there's no further discussion, let's vote on this thing. All right, three of you have fallen asleep. All right, that passes unanimously. Any questions of concern or clarification? Beautiful. Councilmember Peck, she remembered.
Thank you, I did. So we were given, uh, Chapter 1505 Development Standards in our packet. Um, are we going to follow these standards now? Is this the way it's written? Or are we going to redo all of this? Because I have some, just additions to some of these, if, uh...
I think my understanding of, sounds off. I think my understanding of what you got was just to refresh your memory about what the current code standards are on the riparian setbacks specifically, so you would know what was going to be the subject of changes, based on the policy discussions that were going on in the wildlife management plan and others. That's what potentially is going to be changed. I think that's why that was put in the packet.
It's, it's not for discussion, or, we're done with that. This is the code. Yeah.
Councilmember Peck, that is the existing land development code that has the change that made the city council the decision maker on any variance. And so we included that, along with the information that Matt just talked about, so that you would understand what we'll be looking at, based on the direction you gave us.
Okay. Thank you.
And you, good sir, do you have any questions for us regarding direction? And clear, to be clear, I mean, the only direction you've got right now is, that's the deadline work with staff to hit the mark.
No, it's a helpful discussion. I would, I would reiterate what I said earlier. Um, we need to come back and have a good, meaty discussion about your goals for this system. We will do everything we can to inform that discussion, by giving you materials in advance to think about, to think about the different components of a system. We are relatively late to the conversation on an SES for Loma, so we've got some, some, some learning to do about what you've already expressed in terms of your goals, but I'm sure we're going to have to continue that conversation more. So we'll work with your staff to set up a format for that conversation. I would just ask you all to be thinking more specifically about really how you want to use that system, and we look forward to that conversation.
So make sure that you really look at our SES that has been put together, because a lot of work went into that.
We don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, again, I'd be frustrated if we found ourselves in a meeting, and I'm like, we did, I mean, there's lots of policy that we've already passed that establishes a direction. Now, if you don't understand it, come back, because we don't want to get crosswise. But, yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, and I can, that was, that was part of the reason for tonight, because there were a lot of motions from council to do things, and we had never prioritized those issues, and we needed to prioritize them.
Good, now you know it's all of them.
Yep.
Great. I love deadlines. Stimulate progress. Uh, yeah, so, do you mind, anyone, if we skip over the legislative update? Blanket motion? Oh, I mean, well, I mean, it was a legislative update, but I guess the question becomes, yeah, the, uh, yeah, really, I don't think there was a motion, it was just updated. Who's the, what's the motion? I guess, I'm being told that there's a motion on the floor, what is the motion? Why? Well, then make the motion. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move, uh, that the council adopt the recommendations in the legislative update as they stand.
Hold on a second, you can call the question, that's okay too, but hold on two seconds. Is the, is the national vote in here? No, right? Good, okay, then I'm fine. Let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to last call or final call, public invited to be heard. Esteemed Sherri Malloy, making your way to the front. Those of you at home, wake up.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just had a few comments regarding 11A. Um, the first is, like Ruby, I was disappointed and frankly confused by the second bullet on page two of this council communication, uh, that reads, "The River Corridor and its future development are key components of work plan items B3. The work of the advisory, advisory panel of city council related to goals B3 and four will continue to inform the work on the blueprint and subsequent changes to that plan as directed. Setbacks have significant impact on the implementation of any plan that addresses infill and redevelopment along St. Vrain Creek." My first question is, what blueprint is the advisory panel working on? And I don't get how or why the riparian conservation buffer has any significant impact on the implementation of council's goals, B3 and B4, addressing enhanced opportunities for education, technology, and the arts. So I'm disappointed at, at the apparent bias of this paragraph, because I value integrity, and I would hope that staff communications would refrain from stating these kinds of biases. And then, um, secondly, the, um, the Clarion communication referenced coordinating with other city projects, but it left off the open space master plan, which was just recently approved and really highlights some of the economic and environmental benefits of riparian conservation buffers. So I would hope that that document and work would be included for, um, informing future amendments to the LDC. And lastly, um, you demonstrated due diligence on your fiscal responsibility about loaning Thistle $600,000 for renovations and improvements on affordable housing, um, because of their past financial history. I would encourage you to allow the history of flooding in this corridor to be instructive with regards to the fiscal risks of leaving the current loopholes and criteria used to identify circumstances where conservation buffer setbacks reductions may be allowed. So thank you for hanging in for such a long night, and, um, really giving everything your full attention.
All right, let's move on to mayor and council comments. Councilmember Peck?
Perfect. Harold, our counselors, have we, have we adopted the St. Vrain blueprint?
No.
No. So I don't, I kind of agree with that statement. Why would it be in line with that when we haven't adopted it?
Part of it was, so part of the question that came out on that one was, we need to do something on this, we just didn't know what to call, that was part of the conversation that occurred before, and I can't remember when that occurred. Obviously, you haven't adopted, so that's not a policy guidance.
Right, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be, we can't do anything in line with that when we haven't adopted it.
Correct. It is in the work plan, it's in the work plan, but as you, I'm trying to remember when that came up, the council talked about doing something, but calling, it may not be the same thing as that, but having to go over that conversation related to those issues. And I think that'll be the derivative that then comes out of this other work product, that frankly may not be this council that, that looks at that, because you've got to bring those other pieces forward first, in terms of what you've talked about with some of the environmental issues that you all lined out for.
Before we adopt the plan, because what we, what we come up with in our vision will affect the work plan. If it's not in there, then it's not going to work. I mean, the blueprint, not the plan.
Correct. That's what you're developing now on top of that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Uh, Dr. Waters?
I just want to reinforce, that's why you do the visioning, right, first, so that, and I, and I had suggested that we take whatever that label of, say, the blueprint, and peel that off, and set this aside, and figure out at some point in time what's going to give guidance, and don't call it a blueprint, let's...
I thought we voted on that.
Well, I don't think we did that, but, uh, but that does become confusing. I mean, um, and I, and I, and it's not anybody's ill-intent, it was, um, I think the point was, the visioning process we're going through is going to inform a lot, right? And what we do with ordinances ought to reflect the best thinking of not just that advisory panel. I mean, I, I want to, we didn't say enough about how important public engagement is with whatever comes out of that visioning process. And if anybody paid attention to our Friday morning meeting, we agreed that we were going to reserve, once we get something to share, hopefully by May 1st, we'll have a session in the museum, a session in the library, we'll have a session in the senior center, we're going, I'm on the, on the agenda for NGLA. And the suggestion has been made that one of the best examples of public engagement is what we did with the wildlife, or the open space plan.
Correct.
Right? Like, that's a great, I mean, collecting data online in the, in the, in the format, and I, in that conversation, I said, I am absolutely certain that Sandy has the kind of expertise we need, right, to bring the community in to that, so we get every good idea, every best hope, if there are worst fears, we, we hear those. But this is not, what we're doing is teeing it up and inviting the community to join, right? So every voice is heard, and every, you know, aspiration is, is considered as we go forward with this.
And frankly, council, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, and this is what I was alluding to in the timing. If we start moving down a road, and we get into a conversation with the community and the community, it starts moving, that's going to move other things out. We just need to know that may be in play, and that's what I was trying to say. That's the unknown.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'd like to suggest that, that the missing piece that we're looking for in terms of, of how we evaluate the vision is the evaluation system that we're talking about, because the thing that we're looking for is a, is a way to make sure that what we consider as the vision meets a certain bar, that we're not willing to go below. So just one way of thinking about it.
And, uh, nobody else is in the queue. I guess, dawned on to me, being high on sleepiness and caffeine, uh, it dawned on me that the one piece of the vision that I think that everyone is assuming, but nobody really knows, is the definition of river corridor. It dawned on me tonight that I think some people are just insisting that it's 150 feet in the, from the riparian edge. Others are thinking of it in terms of the water, and the water's edge. Um, I'm thinking of it as a wide swath of land that goes through our city, and the question becomes, after we protect our asset, I mean, whether it's natural or economical, it doesn't matter, it's the same, we protect it. People go to Estes Park because it's pretty, right? Uh, people will come here because it's pretty, it's natural. Um, so once you just, once we determine how to protect it, then we could start talking about, all right, well, what do we build so that people can observe it and interact with it? Developers will earn more money, the wildlife will benefit, I mean, everybody wins. And so as we go through this process, in my mind, it's not about a blueprint that just allows people to come in and start developing whatever they want, it's truly, as you close your eyes, what do you envision down there? And I'm talking about the River Corridor, envision along Main Street, or envision throughout the Opportunity Zone. So I think that, that, I mean, there's really, the question is, what do we mean by the River Corridor? And then, what will it look like? And so, in my mind, as we're having these discussions, that chart is a mechanism for we, for having that discussion. And it's a deadline and a process that as we go through, it's, well, what will it look like? And so, and anyway, that, that's what I'm hoping. So, nobody else is in the queue? Glenn Watz, do you have anything, Harold or you, Jane? Smart, smart, considering you have your reviews this week. We're done.
Oh, no, I'm calling everybody when I get up, 5:30. Actually, I've been cheating lately. I've been going...